Ladies and gentlemen, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. We have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? If not, we'll move to Agenda Item Number Two, which would be to consider the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting that was held on September 10th, 2019. Council does have the minutes of that meeting. Are there any corrections?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Russ to approve the minutes as they have been presented. Close the voting. Motion passes. We'll move then to the next agenda item, Agenda Item Number Three. This is the first of several public hearings that we have this evening. This is a public hearing on 301 London Road. This is a public hearing regarding a home property tax abatement request. Sharon, you handling this public hearing? Where's Kyle? I'll call on Kyle Box, the city clerk, to conduct this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have, as you mentioned, several public hearings, two regarding, or this one is regarding, a home property tax abatement. The information has been provided with the numbers provided by the City Assessor's Office, and I believe the City Assessor is attending. See if you have any questions related to that. Otherwise, I can answer any questions you have.
Okay. As part of the public hearing, is the council up questions? Are there any questions from anyone in the audience as part of this public hearing?
Will we close the public hearing?
Motion by Craig.
Second.
Seconded by John to close the public hearing discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion does pass. So we'll move then to the next agenda item, which would be to consider the resolution approving the home property tax abatement for 301 London Road.
Mr. Mayor, I move the resolution.
Motion by John, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. If the motion passes, we'll note one abstention. Move then to the next agenda item, which is Agenda Item Number Five. This is a similar item, 303 London Road, where we have a public hearing on the home property tax abatement request. Kyle has provided the city with, council with, the same information as in the previous public hearing. I will open it up for any comment either from the city council or from the audience.
Move we close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Russ to close the public hearing discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion passes.
Okay. I checked the wrong box there. Is this to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
You're okay with that, right?
I'm okay with that.
So then we'll move to Number Six. This is the resolution, consideration of the resolution that would approve the home property tax abatement at 303 London Road. Questions about this resolution?
Move second.
Motion by Russ, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion does pass, we'll note one abstention. Move then to Agenda Item Number Seven. This is Canoga Park Childcare LLC. Once again, this is a public hearing regarding a business tax abatement request, whereas the two previous public hearings were residential property taxes. This is a business of property tax abatement. This actually is the second one that the city has dealt with. The first was the freightliner truck business. Sharon, do you have comments you want to make as we, in this public hearing?
I just wanted to note, maybe I can wait till the public hearing, but for this particular request, the application came in after construction, and the EDA Board, via their motion, recommended to the city council that there be a reduction in the, in the abatement. And we have Economic Development Director Tara Anken here, who can answer questions during the public hearing. And the other thing that has occurred that may be important to note is that Lyon County has approved a, a commercial tax abatement, which this particular business could apply for, and they have decided to go back to January 1 of 2019. So I, I can explain that more during the public hearing along with Director Anken, if you need or have questions on that.
Okay. So we will open up the public hearing and open up for public comment questions, either from the city council or from the audience. Tara, maybe you want to come forward and explain this request?
Good evening, Council. Thank you for having us here tonight to discuss this. I do have a timeline that was put together. As Sharon alluded to, the permit was a little bit late as far as what that looks like, but I would like to just pass that around here quick, if you don't mind. So if you've driven by there lately, it looks like we're a little bit late in the game, but actually, we received their application the day after the EDA meeting in July, which set us back a whole nother month before we were able to bring it forward to EDA, and then we brought it forward through. So you can see the timeline here that we were working with, which is why it seems like it's sort of late coming to you for this request. Part of the request is that actually, for childcare in Marshall, they're looking at adding, or they are adding on a 16,000 or almost 17,000 square foot addition to the facility. They're doing an entrance, office and meeting area, handicap accessible restrooms, and then an additional 30 spots for children, which would translate into approximately two full-time positions and several part-time positions. So really providing a good impact for the community of Marshall, especially when we know the childcare need in the area is great. So I would open that up for any questions. With the recommendation, I guess I could recap that quick, that the EDA Board did motion to approve the request, but with a 25 percent reduction, so we could incorporate however the council sees fit as far as that goes. So I do have an estimate of what that looks like, and I will pass that around as well.
Okay. Thank you, Tara Woolup, for any questions of Tara from the council.
No questions. Just a little, maybe a little bit more explanation from the EDA discussion. The, you know, we do have the requirements established as far as policy on how we handle the tax abatement, and this did not follow that requirement. And it was felt by the EDA that with those rules, there needed to be some form of reduction. The amount was discussed, and we finally settled on a 25 percent reduction in the abatement, and that's where the recommendation came back to the city. So it was, you know, this has been out there. It was felt, this was advertised. It was unfortunate that either they did not see it, did not think it applied, or whatever the reason was, that they were late in getting it in. We do recognize the need for childcare, but also recognize that this did not follow the policy fully that was established, and we feel there should be some type of penalty for that.
Any other questions for Tara or input for Tara? If not, thank you, Tara.
Thank you.
We'll open up for any general input as part of the public hearing, either from the council or the audience.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So I, and I appreciate the work that the EDA did and the recommendation, and I also look back to the spirit and the intent of why we developed the abatement policy to begin with, and it is to encourage development and expansion, growth, and improvements within the city of Marshall. And I, I guess I'm not sure, you know, it wasn't like they went in for an occup, you know, certificate of occupation or occupancy, and especially looking at the daycare piece. And I don't want to be arbitrary on, or flex on all of these, but I guess I go back to the intent of why we're doing this. And I guess, other than just to make a point of the rule is the rule, I don't understand why we would still stick with a 25 percent penalty. And I respect the fact that the EDA Board worked this through, but I, I just, I just think that we need to look for the opportunities to invite the growth and encourage it, and using the abatement as a tool, because I think it's a very effective tool. It's still a revenue added for the community, and it's an encouragement and a buy-in and an acknowledgement of people expanding, growing, and improving in Marshall. And I just think we want to continue to do that when there's an opportunity. That's just my, that's my personal opinion.
Okay. Other input as part of the public hearing? Either from the audience or the council? Sharon?
Want to add one more thing on the Lyon County commercial tax abatement. Their policy goes back to January 1 of 2019, but they also, I believe, is going to have some language in there that if there's construction that started before January 1 of 2019, and they have not essentially had it on the property tax rules until after January 1, 2019, they would also consider that for a commercial tax abatement. So I just present that to you for additional information when considering applications after construction.
Sharon, I would also believe this is correct, that the county policy would mirror the city policy in terms of the benefits.
They have actually specified the percentage of tax abatement, and we have not done that in our policy based on, you know, essentially, the tax impact, and ours is going to be greater because of the tax rate. And we also kind of wanted to look at each project based on, even though we excluded the but four test in the tax abatement, but things like job creation, tax capacity, we, we may want to do different percentage abatement than what the county specified. So we did not do that as the county did.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just looking at the timeline. It's, I just have a question. Tara, maybe you can answer this. In July, July 12th, Brian reached out with interest in submitting a tax abatement. Is that correct? But yet he wasn't notified that he missed the deadline until September. Why the long leg?
No, no, no.
Notified, September 4th, notified Brian that we, that we missed the deadline for advertising for public hearing.
So this was-
He was notified, or we weren't notified?
No. So when we called for a public hearing, the council called for a public hearing at the August 27th meeting, and then from the 27th, we needed to advertise for the public hearing in the newspaper and all those sorts of things. That was a detail that was missed. So we said, hey, Brian, instead of being, you know, the first September meeting, we called for the public hearing on, or we're holding it on this meeting. So it wasn't that he missed the deadline of the application way back when, it was for calling the public hearing.
Better of calling for the meeting.
Yep.
Right. Understand. And John, I guess I have a question for you. How did the EDA write it, write it at a 25 percent?
After much discussion back and forth, I think it was recognized that, you know, council can set whatever percentage if they want to set a percentage at all. But really, we had just a lot of back and forth discussion. And Greg, I'm not sure if you wanted to contribute anything else to her or the EDA, but it was, there was a couple of motions that didn't pass, and a 25 percent motion was made that did pass. I think that's about as good of an answer as we can.
Other input as part of the public hearing?
Move we close the public hearing?
Motion by Craig, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by John. Discussion? We'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll now consider Agenda Item Number Eight, which was the consideration of the resolution approving the business tax abatement for Canoga Park Childcare LLC. The resolution has the abatement as stated with no reduction.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the application for abatement with no reduction.
Motion by Craig, is there a second? Is there a second to that motion?
For the sake of discussion, I will second that motion.
No, discussion? Any discussion?
I make that motion with a lot of respect for the discussion and the work that happened with the EDA, and I really do appreciate that. And again, I, I stick pretty firm to the spirit and the intent. I fought hard to get rid of the but four test, because I want to encourage this as best. I think we need to have really good reason to not include them, much more than reason to include them. The fact that they're developing and investing in the community needs to be the default yes, and then we have to make decisions on why the answer is no. That's my feeling.
Any other discussion on the motion?
I just want to add that the policy is in its first year, and we did receive some comments back that they are just learning about the program or the policy availability and not from other business owners as well. And then I do have a question on procedure. We have six council members present. We would need majority approval of this, which would be four. Correct?
Correct. Even though one's going to abstain, we still need, we need the four.
Is that correct?
I think it is.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Well, this is on the resolution. We'll close the voting. So that does not pass, even though the majority, there's three in favor, two oppose, one abstention. So based on what you just said, Kyle, it takes four votes to pass, right?
Correct. If there's one abstaining, there's six members still in this hearing.
That motion does not pass. I would consider an alternate motion.
I would make a motion that we approve the abatement with the recommended 25 percent reduction, or 75 percent of the abatement be awarded, based on the estimations provided to us.
Motion by John, is there a second? Is there a second? For the sake of discussion, I will second that motion. Now, discussion on the motion. If there's no discussion, we'll move to a vote on this resolution. Close the voting. This one did not pass either.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the resolution with a 10 percent reduction.
I will second that.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Everybody understands the resolution? We'll move to a vote. Close the voting. There we go. This motion does pass.
Mr. Mayor, since this is done, now I abstain from the authority. Well, I had to.
We're vibrating.
I was. Because I think it's funny that we have to punish the private sector for missing something, but when the public sector missed the public hearing, it's, oh, well, we'll just do it later. I think that's a shame that our private sector is treated differently than our public sector. And I'm not picking on any employees, but his public hearing got missed. It was by mistake because we were busy. The reason Brian did not apply for this is because he's a private business owner that's running three separate businesses. He was busy. If we're going to have a tax abatement policy, we need to respect the fact that the private sector is very busy, and it happens. It happens right, it happened right here on this motion. And unfortunately, he got slapped because he was busy. But when we missed as a public entity, not a big deal. So that's all I wanted to comment.
With that, we'll move to the next agenda item, which is the consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda this evening, and they include consider the renewal.
That's number nine.
Oh, number nine. Agenda item number nine. This is a public hearing to, to consider the adoption of the ordinance amending the, to permit a gun range as a conditional use. With that, my apologies, Elia Gutman, our building official.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The original merit center master plan included the gun range. That merit center plan, merit center is located in agricultural district, and gun ranges are not permitted in agricultural district. Actual gun ranges are not permitted anywhere in the city, in any district. So I did some review and looked at other cities, and it looks like the best course of action is to allow gun ranges as a conditional use in agricultural districts. So that's what recommended. We are changing the ordinance to allow them as a conditional use, and we are doing a few minor other things to just stream it up, but the main thing is that we are allowing gun ranges as a conditional use in agricultural districts.
Okay. Open up for any questions or input as part of this public hearing? If not, thank you, Elia. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing and adopt the ordinance amendment.
So move?
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion does pass. Thank you. Now we'll move to the consent agenda. Items up on the screen, and the consent agenda items include the, consider the renewal of the group long-term disability insurance policy, consider the authorization to declare vehicles a surplus property for a Marshall Police Department, consider the National Highway Traffic Safety Grant, consider approval of the amendments to the personnel policy, amending speed, and maximum allowable reimbursement and per diem rates, consider the wastewater treatment facilities improvement project, the payment, consider the payment of Bolton and Mink invoiced, consider awarding the farm lease on city-owned property in Commerce Park to Keith Wambach, consider the approval of transient merchant license for Fish and Chips LLC, and then to consider the bills and the project payments approval. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion?
Move approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
16 to be polled.
Okay. There is a request for Agenda Item Number 16. Remove the consent agenda. Any other items? With that, I recognize your motion, Craig, and your second. Jim, to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. The motion does pass. Agenda item 16 is the transient merchant license for Fish and Chips LLC. John?
I just, I believe email was sent out that's a little different than what's in our packet, that they requested only a month's worth rather than the, what is it now, three months? Is that correct?
So the applicant had originally applied for the three months license, and he had reached out to me prior to this meeting and changed that request to one month, simply just because winter is fast approaching, and he wasn't sure if he wanted to be working in November or December, so.
Yeah. So it's just a matter of making our, making it clear that this, we'd be approving a one month permit based on his request.
Correct, yep.
The fee reduced?
Yes, it was, it's, it is updated in the packet online, so it's reduced to $30 through the, for 30 days.
So I guess with that, I'd make a motion to approve this, recognizing that it's a 30-day.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Russ. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 18, the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Updates. City of Marshall is a member of the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities with us tonight. Representing the coalition is Marty Seifert. Marty?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Try to be brief and respect your time. I did have a packet that was each of the members would have received, and I'm just going to refer to the chart that you see right here by way of introduction. My name is Marty Seifert. I live like six blocks from here, but I work for Flaherty and Hood, PA, which does the government relations work for the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, which Marshall's been a longtime member of. I'm going to start on the front of this sheet, this chart that you have, just to discuss a little bit about the priorities that the Board of Directors had set for us to try to accomplish at the Capitol. The first being local government aid, and I customized a sheet for you, and of course, Sharon is well aware of this, as well as the budget folks, but we were able to finally pass the increase in local government aid that we've been working on for some years now to get back to where we were in 2002. Our overall level for local government aid is back to where it was in 2002. Marshall is roughly where it was, and you can see on the flow chart that Marshall took a dip down during some of those recession and budgetary challenge years. The bottom on the bar chart shows the different proposals that were in the legislature last year, with the final bill being the $30.5 million that, that was in the green, that's in the green on the end. The reason it says 26 million is that's in the first year. There's another 4 million added in the second year. You being a member of a council understand there has to be compromise, and so we didn't have enough money in the first year to fund the entire amount, so we were fine with adding the 4 million in the second year when the budget estimate showed there was available amounts there. This will calculate out to $115,447 new dollars for the city of Marshall to work with in local government aid from the state of Minnesota. Item number two, which was of particular interest to Marshall, I took a particular interest in this myself, being that I pay water bills in the city of Marshall, is the PFA infrastructure program. Last year, as you may recall, there was $59 million from the Environment and Natural Resources Trust Fund that- that was bonded to pay for city projects, namely ones like Marshall that dealt with wastewater. There was litigation that was brought forward by some environmental groups that did not want to use the clean water fund to pay for clean water projects, like, you know, literally putting water into the, or dirty water into the streams and so forth, which confused some of us. But at the end of the day, we understood that the Department of Finance was not going to sell bonds when they're under litigation. So what we did is worked with the administration, the House and Senate, to unlock those bonds. They switched them over to general obligation bonds. And Marshall, Little Falls, and there is another small town in South Central Minnesota, were the first ones in line to receive that funding, and had we not been able to get that bill passed, I think Marshall would still be in limbo right now, and as you know, the projects get more expensive. The bonds are going to get sold. They're going to be obligated, and Marshall was first in line to receive that money. Second of all, we were trying to lobby for additional funding in bonding, but we did not have a bonding bill this year, unfortunately. There was $440 million agreed to between the House and the Senate, as well as the governor, but they just could not get it done in that four days of special session that they had. So that fell to the wayside, and that'll be on the top of the agenda for next session. We also were in favor of 18 million in legacy funding. Constitutionally, this is that extra sales tax BIF that the voters voted for back in 2008. And that bill did pass, and we're constitutionally kind of required to spend that money. I personally think that it's best to be spent on things like basic infrastructure for water rather than some of the things that, that used to be spent on back in the day. The BDPI program was, is mainly a bonding program. We didn't have a bonding bill, so we ended up getting some money in general appropriations of 3.57 million. That'll keep the program funded through this year and into next year, because we'd have some bonds last year that were left over to keep that going. Childcare, there's a capital grant program that was mainly a rural-focused program. There was no bonding bill, so that did not pass. And then the bottom one, there were some childcare grants between the MiFs and the DED program. There's a $750,000 appropriation for each of those, and we did get language in that at least 60% has to go to Greater Minnesota, where there's been frankly some market failure when it comes to childcare facilities. We just, sometimes we don't have the economy of scale or the, the ability to put that together. On the back page is just all about transportation. We ended up with a bill at the end of the day that just brought in all the gas tax and license tab revenues that we collect at the current rates, and we appropriated that out. There was not a robust transportation bill. As, as many of you know, we get street aid because we're bigger than 5,000. One item the coalition has really lobbied on is the small cities getting a, a portion out of the general fund for street aid, because they don't get anything from the gas tax, and that's in the Constitution. And we're not going to change the Constitution, so we try to get money out of the general fund for that. One of the items we ended up playing defense on was quarters of commerce. Some of you might remember in the 2017 bill, we were able to get an open and standing appropriation of $25 million a year for quarters of commerce, and that's for, for these kind of main thoroughfares like Highway 23, Highway 14, to keep them maintained and, and put in passing lanes and, and infrastructure improvements. And the Senate actually deleted that appropriation. That was an open and standing, ongoing appropriation. So we had to kind of run in and save that. Generally, most people, regardless of party, do recognize the need for transportation infrastructure spending. So that is a quick synopsis of that chart. I just want to draw your attention to a couple more items, particularly for Marshall, because environmental regulations have really been kind of a vexing issue in this area. So there is an extra handout to talk about some of our environmental initiatives, both on the funding side and on the regulatory side. The MPCA has tried to increase fees on cities and how much cities pay to help frankly pay for their budget. That's item number 12. We did have a lot of participation in different rulemaking hearings. As many of you know, the shrimp company issue is one that bubbled up with Laverne on the specific conductant rule, which is about 40 years out of date. And we did secure a phone call between the governor and the mayor of Laverne, as well as the MPCA commissioner and staff, to get expedited rulemaking moving forward to update a lot of these rules. And not only hurts Laverne, it hurts Marshall, it hurts Pipestone, it hurts Worthington, because we're very egg-heavy, water-heavy users. And I do have to give some credit to the administration for, for working with us much better than what we've seen in the past under other administrations on trying to, to break through the, the regulatory roadblocks that we're seeing when it comes to the rulemaking issues. So with that, I just want to draw your attention real quickly. We do have our fall conference coming up, November 14th and 15th. That's where our legislative agenda will be set for the next year. And we will be working a lot on transportation funding, the environmental regulatory issues and bonding like we have in the past. Our lobby day is on March 11th, and that's when we have a lot of you that are members of the council, mayors, and administrators come up and visit with our lawmakers about the importance of all these different issues, unfunded mandates and so forth that you have to live under. So with that, I'll stand for any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Marty. Questions? No, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Move then to agenda item number 19, update on the MinDOT College Drive project. So with us tonight is representative of, I believe that, I believe your title is project manager for the upcoming Highway 19 project through the City of Marshall. So welcome.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. And council members. Again, my name is Jean East. I am a project manager for the College Drive project here in Marshall. I was here last year in July, towards the end of July, introduced you briefly to the, to the project. Again, from, on College Drive or Highway 19, from Fourth, Fourth Street to Bruce Street, so through the heart of your downtown. And we have, we're making some progress on the project, so I wanted to come back and, and make good on our commitment to keep you in the loop and keep you up to date on what we're working on. We have made some progress in our data collection and some of the work going on, and we're moving into some public engagement soon that you may hear of or see or be part of in the near future. So again, I wanted to come back and bring you an update. So the first and primary piece I want to share tonight is that in the very near future, we're going to be starting some public engagement work that will include actually a world cafe, much as you put on for your city, visioning work that you've done. We're going to hold one of those for our vision for our Highway 19 or College Drive project. And we have that planned for October 15th. Soon you'll see some mailings, public, or rather, social media, newspaper, et cetera, radio. So you'll see those things soon. Again, we expect that to be held October 15th for, for our project. That's the main portion of it. We do also expect to have some smaller, more focused types of engagement pieces going on with faith groups and some, some stakeholders on the project. So that's our, my main message tonight is just to have you be aware that if we're going to be out, reaching out to your citizens and spending time with them and, and you as well. So if you, your neighbor says, what's this about? We want you to be well-informed. Also, we are making some, some progress within the project itself. No major steps have been completed, but we have been collecting a lot of traffic information, and we have started to analyze the traffic movements, the need for signals, and what types of intersections. So we're in the early stages of that work. We also, in fact, today we did a, what we call a bicycle and pedestrian-based group. We have a bicycle and pede-focused group out of our St. Paul office was out, and we took a walk up and down the corridor and tried to tie our project into the, the needs outside the project. So we're, we're out there gathering information, and all these things, of course, will lead to that project scope and a geometric layout that will become the project in the future. So those things are all underway. As we start to make decisions and as we start to move further along in the process, we will continue to keep you up to date. And with that, if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to address those. Otherwise, again, we look forward to another update in the near future, we hope.
Thank you, Jean. Questions? One question, the. Do you anticipate any property acquisitions? And when would you be in that acquisition phase?
I think at this point, property acquisitions will probably be in what we often refer to in strip takings, narrow pieces. Major acquisitions, we do not believe so at this point. I think we'll be looking at strip acquisitions on occasion, often some temporary need for pedestrian work, pedestrian ramps and sidewalk moves, et cetera. But generally, our expectations are for pretty minor right-of-way taking.
And the, there's three crossings of the river in the stretch that you're talking about. There's no bridge updates. They have been completed.
There are, there are two. There is two, in our terms, bridges. There is a triple culvert in the Shuan's area, as well as the one with the historic rail near, near Lyon, or Marshall Street, excuse me. That, those two are within the project limits as we see them now. And no, we do not anticipate any bridge work in those. Those, the three culvert bridge is in good condition. We expect no immediate need for that to, to change. It's in, in good condition. And it wasn't long ago that the deck was resurfaced on, on the Lyon, or Marshall Street area bridge near the park.
And I would just add to that, that it was nice to see the completion of the historic lighting within the past couple of weeks there.
Very good.
Other, any other questions or input for Jean? Now we look forward to the public input sessions.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move then to agenda item number 20. This is the consideration of the cable television franchise ordinance between the City of Marshall and Spectrum Mid-America, doing business as Charter Communications. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Well, this has been a long process, but we're presenting the agenda item to you tonight to update a franchise agreement. Also in attendance, we have Amanda Doer from Charter Spectrum. If you want to, if you want to speak to any of the issues, I guess Amanda, you certainly can.
I'm available if there's any questions, but I don't, just thank you for the good work of the city.
Cover memo addresses some of the highlights, the, for the city receives a 5% revenue, gross revenue off of this. And always a sticking point is negotiating PEG payments, the Public Education Government part of this. And that will remain at the $1.50 per subscriber per month for five years, and it will be reviewed after a five-year period of time. And that has allowed for the purchase of significant improved equipment that the city has used. And we have a major presence out there with the equipment that the PEG dollars have provided and. And there's a requirement that they are used otherwise as previously negotiated prior to the five years. Correct. You have a five-year, it's the $1.50 for five years, but within the contract, yes. Are you using those funds appropriately within that five-year period of time? Are there any other questions? Sharon?
Mr. Mayor and Council, and I know that there is a lot of time and effort put into this. I've met Amanda and talked to her several times, so I don't mean to frustrate anybody on this particular question, but maybe it could be easily answered. Was the indemnification language changed at all from previous agreements? Or is it the same language?
Same language carryover from the 2003 agreement. There was some indemnification changes regarding charter's obligation to indemnify. No changes in paragraph 3.1, 3E that you referenced on page 26 or 28, whatever. That is carryover language from the prior agreement.
And the reason I ask that is I, the, the League Insurance Trust would or could do indemnification review of the language. And I'm not, again, not trying to hold this up. I, you know, the council, I suppose, could, can approve the, the agreement contingent upon the LM CIT review. But I will, I just throw that out to the council and to the city attorney as, as, I guess, a question if, if that should be done.
Do you have an opinion on whether or not that would be advisable? I do not believe that's necessary. As indicated, this is carryover language from the prior agreement as drafted by Mr. Brian Grogan, Moss and Barnett, kind of the expert on this stuff. So we carried that language forward. There were some other indemnification changes regarding the obligation of Charter Spectrum, but not on the city's obligation. Other questions?
So there were changes to the indemnification on the Charter Spectrum requirements.
Correct, but not the city's obligations for indemnification. Charter's obligations to indemnify city, there were some changes there, but not on the city's indemnification obligations.
So were the indemnification modifications on the charter side more to the city's interest or less to the city's interest?
I would say less to the city's.
And I think we want the review by LM CIT, don't we? And I think just to make sure we do due diligence, I think I would be willing to make a motion to approve this pursuant to the review, the indemnification review by LM CIT.
I would second that. Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim to approve contingent on review by LC MIT. Discussion of the indemnification language?
Right.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. Motion passes. Move then to agenda item number 21. This is the Block 11 redevelopment project. We will have a presentation of the proposed development from APX Construction Group LLC. I'll ask Tara Anken to, Tara, were you coming forward or? I'll ask Tara Anken to come forward and introduce this item. Tara Anken, Economic Development Director.
All right, I just have a few things to pass out as well. All right, so everybody's been excited about a Block 11. We've been working on it for quite a long time. So I'll just start with the Block 11 history. And over the past 10 years, we've been working to acquire the dilapidated parcels on this block. So this was something that council had set forth over a decade ago to direct the city and the HRA to begin acquiring these parcels as they came up for sale. In the City of Marshall comprehensive plan, it states that the central business district is an important element of downtown Marshall. So the city should work to make sure that the atmosphere downtown is conducive to supportive of housing, retail, service, and businesses in the downtown area. We also, as outlined in the comprehensive plan, was promoting the cooperation of the city and the public and private sector in redevelopment, consistent with the need to maintain a strong downtown area and to also encourage a positive, vital, unique image for the downtown area as well. So what we have is a site map here, and for everybody that doesn't know for Block 11, if you're watching at home, it's the parcels that are adjacent to Varsity Pub. So it's the empty lot behind the pub and then over where the other buildings are around that block. So before we go into any details, I do have a couple of pictures of the property as it sits currently on the next slide. And I want to acknowledge that there are a lot of moving pieces to this project. So as you know, there's buildings there. There was a former gas station believed to be there. MPCA does not have records of the tanks. Petrofund does not have records of the tanks. So there's a lot of unknowns as we move forward with this project. So the other thing that we don't know is there are some easements, utilities, the soil conditions, like when we demolish the buildings, if that's the route that goes. Bear with us as we work through the details, because there's a lot of moving pieces here. But, but we, as city staff, have met. We've met with Apex, who I'll introduce here shortly. But we, as city staff, have met, we've met with Apex, who I'll introduce here shortly. We're all aware and we're all working as a team to make sure everybody's involved early and often in these conversations as we work towards redevelopment of this property. So I'll talk a little bit more about the timeline. Like I said, we determined this 10 years ago, and that's why the city or HRA has been acquiring these parcels. Back in December of 2018, the EDA had approved the Block 11 RFP for redevelopment, which it's hard to seem that it has been nine months ago already, but, or 10. So December 21st, I'm not going to go through all of these in line, but you can see as steps have been taken subsequently over the past nine or 10 months, we're very excited to be where we are at this point today. We received two proposals, one of which had far greater tax potential, housing unit potential. The Subcommittee on the EDA that looked at those preliminary proposals unanimously, or I think, I shouldn't say unanimously, but overwhelmingly supported this proposal as far as proceeding with conversations for how we can bring this forward to the public for consideration. So with that, I will introduce to you the Apex Construction Group. They're based out of Mankato, and with us tonight, we have Jorge Leep and Sean. So I'll ask them to come up and give a brief overview of the project. And the request tonight, before I let them start their part, the request tonight is for city council to make a decision on us moving forward with preparing a pre-development agreement. So that would just outline early terms for us to do more homework. It gives the developer a, essentially like a right of first refusal on the property, so the property is locked up, so they're not spending time on it, and then the city goes and sells it to somebody else. It's mutually beneficial for the city and the developer to have a pre-development agreement. And we can talk about the terms and what that looks like as we go along, but I will let them introduce the project, and we can talk more about that later. Thank you.
Thank you, Tara.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Counsel. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Jorge Lopez. I represent Apex Construction Company. It's a company that was founded in 2014 as a construction company, and little by little, we started doing more development. I started working with this company at the beginning of this year in March, and we have been pretty busy doing a lot of development in southwest Minnesota and Minnesota, and we're looking at moving into South Dakota, you know, because I have over 15, 16 years of experience working on development. I have done over $100 million in different developments, cities, counties, multifamily and single-family homes. The history of Apex, we have a combined experience of about 30 years in development, you know, between me and other members of our team. Our president, our CEO, could not be here today, unfortunately. He is in Vegas looking at the possibility of building a hotel in Mankato. So he got the part of traveling, you know, and that's, that's fine. We, we focus on quality, cost, and good results. That's what we believe. We have experience in office, retail, industrial, medical, student housing, multifamily housing, community, nonprofit, governmental, and civil. We also do owner representative for cities and counties and other individuals that are looking to have somebody else looking at their projects for their benefits. With me, I have two of our team members that work with EAPC, which they will be doing a little presentation of what we're trying to do in Block 11. We're so excited about this project that when talking to members of the city staff, we found out that the possibility of another redevelopment will arise is the hotel and hotel in downtown Marshall that we put together a response for an RFP, because we're also very excited about that possibility. We want to be here. We want to work with you. We want to work with the staff, and we want to make sure that we together can do something for the City of Marshall. So with that, I'm going to allow Leep and Sean to talk about the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counsel. I'll just kind of go briefly into who EAPC is. We are a full-service architecture and engineering company. We have 10 offices across northern, south Dakota, Minnesota, Colorado, and Arizona. We have over 130 design professionals as part of our team. And as a company, we do well over $275 million in construction across all the, our regions. So we are excited to be part of this team. Thank you, Jorge, that we were invited to be part of the Marshall Mixed-Use Project. We, as a company, do quite a bit of mixed-use development from major cities. We're located in Sioux Falls, and we have opportunities to do some mixed-use projects there as well. And Sean is one of our project architects that is going to talk a little bit more specifics about the project itself.
Thank you, Leep. So I'm going to run through a little bit of what we're thinking right now, based on what we presented in our proposal. So as you, as Leep mentioned, we're very excited to be a part of this development. And I personally am really excited to be a part of this in Marshall. I'm originally from Slaton, Minnesota. So I spent a lot of time in Marshall as a kid, shopping, and then once I was able to drive, going to the movie theater. So always entering downtown, I'd come right by this block and turn and go to the movie theater. So it was really exciting to see to have the opportunity to improve the downtown and sort of create a new, a new entrance to the downtown of Marshall, at least from the south. So this is the development. You can see Maine is along the bottom. So since this is covering, you know, three quarters of the site, we were trying to look at the best use of the property and, and how we could get the most development for the City of Marshall. So this is one of many concepts that we, we looked at, and there's probably iterations that'll be discussed as we go throughout the process to figure out what the best mix is and the best development. So this is makes the L-shaped building, parking in the front. There's retail on the first floor, and you can still access it from Maine and then access it from East College Drive. In our initial interview and discussion with the city, there is a desire to keep the access through the alley, through the building. So either we would kind of separate into two buildings or create sort of a, an access through the middle. That, one of those many details that we'll have to work out. So on the first floor, yeah, it's, it's all retail. It's left wide open. We'll be working with sort of a, a local commercial realtor and the city and to try to figure out the best tenant mix for this development and try to get this all filled in. The center, green area, sort of residential core, there'll be some, you know, sort of a leasing office, various amenities and things for the residents up above. So on the next floor, right now, we're anticipating a mix of 56 units. Right now, it's, you know, 42 two-bedroom, 14 one-bedroom. Again, that mix could change. That was just what we felt was the best use at this time for market rate housing in the city. So here's kind of a typical look at some of the plans of what the, what the different units would look like, sort of a, you know, open concept in the middle, two-bedroom, two-bath concepts. And so, and then this is a view from heading on East College Drive, as you would see sort of between the existing, the bar on the corner. And then the next one. And then this was kind of the view that you would have entering from the south, sort of a signage on one side and sort of becomes a new entrance, and there'd probably be more things that we can do to sort of make that a real nice entrance to the downtown area. Yes, just covering on a few final thoughts, as we've discussed, Leep and Jorge have discussed, we have an experienced and creative team, and we understand what the City of Marshall's trying to accomplish with this block, and it's been going on for a long time, and we are ready to, to work with the city and, and figure out what the best use of that property is. And we know that, that local participation is, is very important and is valued in, in all fronts of this development, both from a construction side, a development planning. We want to make sure that this is for the city, and we want to make sure that everybody's involved, and we can work, work together with you guys to do that.
Thank you. Counsel, have questions about the, the project as this information has been shared? John? Just, I think you may have answered it in your comments, but just to be sure, are these all intended to be market rate apartments? And, you know, kind of what ballpark-ish range do you have a thoughts on where you think those are going to be?
Well, right now, we were talking about $900 for one bedroom. I think what, I don't recall, you know, but I thought it was $909.50, something like that. And then maybe $800 for the one bedrooms, you know? And that's something that we're also looking at, because while we have had some meetings with Tara and Sharon and some other staff, you know, we're getting to know more the market, and we, we want to make sure that they're going to be able to be rented and occupied, you know? We want to build something great, but we also want to make sure that they're occupied, you know? Something I forgot to mention before, I'm from Worthington, so I have worked here in Marshall for a lo, a long, long time. You know, we have done some housing and multifamily projects nearby, so.
I just would want to add to that, too, as he's talking about unit mix and rental rates and stuff. That's all stuff or details that would be worked through during the pre-development period, where they can dig deeper into the market data, they can do some, you know, research on that and then arrive at pro forma, and that's all part of that pre-development agreement. So if we feel that, okay, I know so many people need three bedrooms, well, they would be open to incorporating some of that, or if there's a different type, you know, that's all really great conversations that we could have during that pre-development time. And then also, I do want to point out that based upon the very, very early projections of costs, acquisition, underground parking, that's potentially included in this plan to accommodate the housing units, abatement, we did some pre, very preliminary projections on tax abatement and TIF, and for the city to recoup some of its cost as far as property acquisition, demolition, soil corrections, if, if and when there are any, setting up a TIF district would be likely for this area or for this site to realize the property redevelopment. It's, it's basically probable that we would need to use TIF in order to see this proceed.
I guess you, you pretty much answered my question. One was, is there government dollars going to be involved? And it sounds like either TIF or abatement would be involved here.
Yep.
The other thing I was concerned about is the parking spaces, and I, this is downtown, so it's exempt from the normal parking space ordinances, correct? And even though it's exempt, you know, if the residents are taking up the parking spaces, what, what's available for commercial? And, and did you say something about maybe underground parking or?
Yes, so that's one of the items that we would want to research feasibility on during the pre-development agreement time, is looking at the soils, making sure that there's the space, the entrance, the exits, and the, the site can accommodate that underground parking, because that is incorporated into the plan, and that would be a benefit to tenants there as having covered underground parking, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
I guess, I don't really have a question, but you guys have mentioned you've done a lot of other projects. Can, you know, maybe get to Tara or Sharon, where these other projects are, you know, addresses per se, you know, towns? I would, I do a lot of travel, and I would like to pop in and look at some.
I can, I can send you a list, but...
Yeah, I appreciate it. There's no list. Yeah, I love, I've done other, and I'm sure you have. We don't have lists. I would love a list.
You can send a list.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Send it to Craig, too.
I'll send it to all of you.
Other questions? If not, thank you, Tara. Thank you to the post group. You know, this does fit with our long-term planning to encourage development in the downtown area, both retail office as well as housing. Probably the next step would be to determine some of those details that would be outlined in the pre-development agreement to determine whether or not this project would go the next step. The one question I would have, because Jorge brought it up, he brought up the other potential project. Should we have two separate pre-development agreements that could be underway at the same time?
Yeah.
I realize we don't, these projects are not tied together and should not be tied together, but...
Right.
But the, the timing may be opportune to move forward with two agreements.
That's great that you brought that up, because we did talk to Michaela from Baker Tilly, our financial advisor, on that, and that is something that we could work with her on, per counsel recommendation.
Other input or questions?
Just a note for the councils, that we do plan on bringing back this agenda topic on October 8th, and we hope to at that time have a pre-development agreement for your review and consideration. A pre-development agreement, if I said that correctly.
Right. Yep, and the, there's...
Would that include one for the downtown hotel?
I don't, I, you might have to correct me here. It wasn't clear that we were going to do a pre-development agreement on the hotel and the, and my understanding is that Block 11 won, it's a little more complex. We sent out an, our formal RFP, and a benefit to having the pre-development agreement is there's some timelines in place. We'd like to see it developed as is in the hotel, but at some point, when timelines aren't, aren't met, you know, kind of what's the, how do we kind of exit out of a particular development if it had to come to that point? But we can certainly ask Springstead what their recommendation is on that.
Yeah, so with the, like, the downtown hotel, it would likely be just a regular, straight-out development agreement, because the building is there, there's no demolition involved, no soil corrections involved, so that would be an actual development agreement, and that's why it's different from the pre-development agreement on Block 11, because there's so many more moving pieces on Block 11 that we'd have to work through. But it's exciting, and it's fun, so.
Other questions? If not, this will be coming back on October 8th.
Yep.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Move then to agenda item number 22. This would be the Resolution authorizing use of tax increment finance to reimburse the expenditures.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. The resolution before you tonight is just more of a housekeeping. It's to be able to use TIF funds for the demolition of Block 11, which we just got done talking about. When we had purchased all of the land on there, we had used pooled TIF dollars as a source of funds. So this, this would allow us to do the same thing for the demo as we did for the acquisition. And the plan is to reimburse TIF once the property becomes taxable, whether it's with future tax increment with a new district or some other sort. I don't, I don't believe, it depends on if we sell the property, all that, all that would then go back to pay the TIF back. So this is just a housekeeping in order to use pooled TIF funds like we have with the rest of the property.
Thank you. Questions? Is there a motion to approve?
I'm going to need Kyle to help me out here. Say, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by John, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Russ. Discussion? If not, we will move to a vote.
Give this a raise. Thanks, Kyle. Well, fat fingers and quick on the maws.
We'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And that motion passes. Move then to agenda item number 23, consideration of the approval... Move then to Agenda Item Number 23, consideration of the approval of the food service agreement with the agreement renewal with Marshall Amateur Hockey Association, which is a Minnesota nonprofit. Scott, this is identical to the current agreement, except for the dates.
You are correct.
Other details you want to go in?
I'd welcome any questions of the council. There's, as Mayor Burns said, there's, Craig, do you have some changes you want to add to it?
No, I'm motioning to Kyle.
To Kyle?
Ha.
But I'd welcome any questions. There are no changes to the agreement other than the renewable dates for one year.
I know. I have a question, and I already asked Craig about it today, so he helped me understand it simply. As we make this agreement, Maha is keeping the money, which is fine, correct?
That's correct.
Are we, and I had just suggested to Craig, are we at all putting money away to replace the equipment at the Merritt Center? It's now five years old, you know, still, this hard, this hard, this equipment costs money to replace. Are we setting up some type of fund or we should in the future, what percent of revenue to put away to replace the food service equipment that's in the Merritt Center? And I know Craig and I had an extensive discussion on this. I think that's something we should start looking into, is make sure we have, there's revenue out there that we put some money, you know, a way to replace this equipment.
We do earmark dollars towards replacing equipment as needed into the arena budget.
And Scott, my answer to him on that was that it's not specifically necessarily the Maha dollars and that part of this is, is because certain dollars that we generate through the sale, local option sales tax has the ability to do maintenance where the Maha actually invests in things that may not be those maintenance. So a lot of times as they raise their funds, they've been, they've been extremely aggressive at reinvesting in, in Red Baron Arena and Expo beyond just the hockey piece. So that was my, you know, quasi-member of the board's answer to him is that when I see the money move, that's kind of the vision that I have from being on the board. I hope that's accurate.
That's correct.
So was last year, the first year that Maha operated, refresh me on this?
This would be the third year of the agreement.
Yeah, and I like that answer. If Maha's reinvested, you know, we can reinvest. I just want Craig to explain that answer to the public. You know, Maha is also putting this money back in the arena. That was kind of.
It's been a good, it's been a good force multiplier relationship, I think.
Yes.
I guess that my concern is this is the third agreement, third year of the agreement. And for two years, we waived the requirement of the commission because in each of the agreements, there's a 5% commission provision that this, that Maha is going to pay 5% of the gross sales to the city for the use, for this agreement. And for the last two years, we've waived it. This will be the third year we waive the requirement. I'm guessing, I'm wondering, are we ever going to enforce this provision if we keep waiving it every year?
We, we have had those discussions with Maha. We agreed that this year we would not assess any fee so that they could continue to operate concessions. And they've done an outstanding job of providing that service to the city. So we've agreed to for the next year that we would not assess a fee. In terms of your question for the future, I guess I would say that that would be part of future discussions.
The, have we ever received any financial information from Mava as regarding what the gross sales are? Do we know what the 5% commission amount would be?
We have not. We haven't requested those records.
And I think that would be, and I've said this in previous years, I'd certainly like to see that information. How much are they getting in gross sales? Can they afford to pay something? Because again, that provision was put into the original agreement and we just haven't enforced it for the last two years. And this will be the third year. I think it would be important for the city council to know what the gross sales are and, and what the 5% commission would be. I think that's useful information for us. And before we make decisions on these matters, we should have that information.
We can certainly ask Maha to present that information and bring it before council.
Is Maha a 501(c)(nonprofit)?
I believe that they are, but I can't speak to the specifics of that.
I believe they are. I believe they are. Yep.
I agree with my fellow council members in regarding, they are providing a very valuable service. But I also agree with Councilman Bearcullar. I think we need to see those numbers. I don't like waiving fees. They're doing a great job, but like Councilman Lozinski said, it's five years old. It's going on, and next year it'll be six years old. And there's things that are going to be, start breaking down, wearing out, need to be repaired. And the council is going to be on the hook to repair those items right now. I think, whether it be tables and chairs or equipment in the kitchen or whatever the case should be, I think we need to start setting some money aside. And I think Maha, by showing us their books would be a good faith effort of saying, yeah, we can, we maybe can't afford the 5%, maybe we can afford 2%. Maybe we can afford 1%. But I think it's, it's a good faith effort. They're doing a good job. I'm not going to say they are not. But I think it's just something that we have to be aware of.
Any other questions for Scott or discussion?
And I think the other thing you have to be aware of with Maha is they host several tournaments in Marshall, correct?
That's correct.
And I know, you know, as an owner, part owner of a hotel, our manager has told us that the arena has put a lot more head, hockey puts heads on beds and people in Marshall because I made the comment to him in April, we should get more expos out of here. His response was, we should keep the ice for another four weeks.
You know, and Councilman Lozinski, that's a, that's a great point. And one of the things, and I think when they did the state Bantam tournament two years ago, that really showed the amount of effort that they put in. And I mean, Maha does a lot of, they're, they run on volunteers. You know, there's nobody making money there as an individual. And that, that effort that they put in and the agreement that they made is three-day tournaments now. That is their policy is, as, rather than two-day, they book those out and schedule them to be three-day tournaments as best they can and load those things up. And it's all about heads and beds when, when Southwest Amateur Sports Commission meets. That, that comes up, that is the, the front of everything they do is understanding that, that this is to bring teams and to bring families into Marshall and put them here and keep them here.
And hotels create a lot of tax revenue.
Yes.
For the city of Marshall, along with that, you know, and that's where, it's a balancing act. I don't know what it is.
I believe, remind me, Scott, I think I was part of the discussions last year and I think I did hear an amount on income from the concessions. And I, and in this, we didn't get the, a printout, so to speak, but I estimated the 5% about $1,000 at that point. It wasn't a large amount. And I think the other thing to consider, and we can certainly produce this for the council, is cost avoidance figures, which is if we were operating the concession stand, hiring staff, paying a wage and whatever else goes along with it. It likely is that we are avoiding costs by having Maha operate the concession stand. But maybe we should provide that to the council as well.
When the sports arena was planned in the first place, weren't we supposed to make some money off concessions, not lose money?
I don't believe that was.
We're not losing any money.
Well, no, no. But I mean, in the sense that she's saying, in effect, it wouldn't be beneficial for the city to do it ourselves. But I, what I'm saying is, you know, we had sponsorships and all these things. Weren't they supposed to generate some revenue for the sports arena? And that, it wasn't, I'm not saying we're supposed to make a lot of money, but I think there were promises made when the sports arena was built that there'd be certain things and would have certain sponsorships and would have certain money from concessions and so forth.
Sure. The sponsorships are a revenue source and that has been highly successful. Participation has been highly successful. But I don't believe that selling concessions was ever portrayed as that was going to be a revenue source. That was really a service that was the expectation of the business. And of course, we had the first year of the operation where the food service provider from SNSU was there. And it was not only costly, but the service was not good because they weren't staffing it during the peak times, you know, a tournament or a game. My goal past nine o'clock might be, that's what the shift ended. So what Sharon said about the, avoiding the paid staff and relying on volunteer staff, that's one of the reasons this works is because there's this volunteer effort there. But Scott, you may have something more to add there.
Sharon's correct. It would be cost prohibitive, Glenn, to, for the city to, to run concessions at that facility.
And I'm not saying that the city wants to or should, and I appreciate that Mava's doing it. But they're benefiting from it. And there's, there's cost to doing business. They pay for their inventory, for their supplies and other things. And they are using our equipment. And we're talking about where do we get money to replace it? Well, this, even though if it's $1,000 or whatever year, that would help replace the equipment. It's a cost of doing business. And I guess my, again, my opinion when this was built, I didn't think that, that, that in a sense, the public has said that we're not going to be able to make a goal with concessions. I think it was an idea concessions would take care of itself. And now concessions seems to be a problem, that unless Mava does it, we're in big trouble. And I don't, I don't think that was the information conveyed to the voters and others when this was originally planned, that we would have trouble with concessions.
As with any new business, if you look at this as a business venture, as with any new business, you don't always know all the outcomes. And sometimes you have to change on the fly. And I believe, you know, I was first on the council when this discussion came up. And we had to make this change and it was a good change. As with any business, Glenn, sometimes you got to change. And we look at the cost of what the hockey arena brings in. We need to look at what it brings in totally into the city. And it's, you know, if Mava quits doing concessions and we can't do tournaments, what are we going to lose in tax revenue? Again, hotels and food is a huge tax revenue, as Annette would probably be happy to tell us. So I mean, there's, there's more than just concessions, this whole piece of the pie. And, you know, so it's working well and.
Mayor, couple of point order. First of all, it's not Mava, it's Maha. It's the Amateur Hockey Association that's actually running the concessions. And a little bit of a walk back to history. So we use the concessioner or the, the food vendor that does the contract at the college. And we tried that because it seemed like that was a good agreement. Again, they're, they're not, they're used to running a cafeteria setting. That's what the staff was for. And they're not used to doing scattered events and tournaments. So then, as I recall, when that agreement failed and they actually pulled out, I think that our city staff, mostly the park and rec staff stepped up. And I remember city staff that were literally boiling hot dogs and trying to run a concession there while we tried to figure out where we're going to go. Maha was a blessing. Okay? I, we, I raised a hockey family. And I raised a hockey family in a facility that the association owned and self-paid. Now I look back and granted, they're not giving us the 5% that we talked about. But I go back to my original answer when this item started. They return a substantially greater amount of money investing that they don't have to into this facility. So I think we have to look at the total sum. And we can split this out. And I agree, I want to, I'd like to see the numbers just so I understand where we're at. But our, our cooperative agreement right now in having Maha as a tenant member of the Southwest Amateur Sports Commission is a very positive piece. And I, for one, really appreciate what they've done to help make that facility really go.
And, and I'm not saying anything bad about Maha. I appreciate what they're doing. They do a service to communities. So it's not about whether we like Maha or not, or whether or not they do a good job. It's whether or not they should help pay something towards the use of the facility.
My point is, is they do.
I didn't interrupt you. I don't. So my point is, it's a legitimate cost of business. They can pay something for the use of it. And, and these are taxpayer dollars. This is a subsidized facility. I mean, the taxpayers are paying a huge, they paid millions of dollars for that facility. And all I'm saying is, I think it's fair that if they agreed, I mean, that provision was put in the original agreement three years ago. And they agreed to it and we agreed to it. And yet we don't enforce it. And if it wasn't fair, we wouldn't have had it in agreement in the first place. And all I'm saying is, I think it's time to enforce that provision. And that's all I'm saying.
Yeah. I guess, you know, you're both, one, I do agree that we had difficulties and Maha coming in was a blessing for us. I do think it's worthwhile taking a look at that. So I guess I would make a motion that we accept the agreement as it is stated for this year and ask that over the next several months, whether it's six months or whatever, that Maha put a presentation together. And if they're uncomfortable doing it at a council setting, perhaps a ways and means or some other committee, that they go through the, enough of their finances. And it may very well turn out that the 5% isn't anywhere as near what they're putting into it already. Or it may be. And I guess let's look at the numbers and find out.
So your basic motion is to.
Approve the, the agreement as it is, without the commission in, but ask that they do a presentation of their finances, of what's been going on with the concessions in the la, maybe last year or something.
Over the term of this agreement, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded motion by John, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And the motion passes. We'll move then to the next agenda item, which is the, consider the Merritt Center Road Course Phase Two project cost.
I'll start, I'll start with that one, please. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Jason and I are going to tag team on this a little bit because it's probably not fair for him to go through a couple of the items on here. Two of the items that you have listed are about 50% of the change order amount. And generally, when we, the reason it's coming to council at this time is because it's approaching that limit that we established in change order provisions before they come to council. So if you take a look at the second one and the third one, those are about $72,000 worth of work that really were as a result of miscalculations by the engineer to start with. And whenever we get into those types of things on a project, we look at them very hard and we go, should we go back to the engineer for a insurance of errors and emissions, for instance? And in our discussions of those two items, it becomes an issue of if they would have been included in the original bid, they would have been included in the cost of the project. And those two items are included for reimbursement through the project costs. We do discuss it with our city attorney as well to discuss what are the litigation issues that may arise when you go back to the contractor or the, in this case, the engineer. And the issue is, it's going to cost us a lot more than going forward with the project as if it would have, the quantities would have been correct. So we found this fairly early on in the project. And as we, we, city staff actually recalculated all the quantities that may be incorrect for those two items. There may be some other minor ones, but those are, those were two major ones, as you can see. There wasn't enough tile and there wasn't enough Class V gravel. The Class V gravel, of course, is a fairly significant amount, especially when you're doing a track. You're doing the roadway. The other thing that we have with the, with the consultant that we worked with is all of the people that we initially consulted with, they're gone. And it was new people that came in and we didn't have a real good explanation of who made the mistake in the company. But there was a mistake. But these are the quantities that we would pay for if the quantities were correct. And we are recommending that they be included in the change order after discussion with the attorney and the process that we use. So if you have any questions, you can take those up and I'll, I'll discuss those. Jason will take care of all the other ones.
Jason, I'll let you proceed with the other. Then we'll open up for questions.
Okay. I'll just step back for just a minute and just mention that the purposes of this item being on the agenda is because we anticipate that our costs are going to go over the contingency policy that council somewhat recently approved, which is if we're allowed to continue with change orders and adjustments, as long as we don't go over, can project contingency funding plus $25,000. In this case, that's 5% plus $25,000. It's, it's kind of difficult for us to conclusively say this next item is going to hit the mark. So we just figure, while we're starting to get up here and get close to the number, it's a great time to come in and talk to you. So we've listed some items that have resulted in cost changes. Glenn went through a couple items pretty well there. The other stuff is just, we get into things in a project, we make changes. It's pretty standard. I would entertain any questions about any item.
Remaining items yet to do are completion, the concrete and the asphalt surface.
That's correct. The concrete work should be completed probably by the end of this week and the asphalt surfacing should follow over the course of the next couple of weeks.
Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of questions. So. So, I understand the, the error by the, the engineer on estimating both the tile quantity and the Class V. So, part of their payment is based on total project cost, correct?
It was a dollar amount up to the contract amount. So, we will not be going back and paying them more money.
Well, I sure hope we don't pay for the, the missed engineering. We, we've had this discussion when we were doing change orders on a previous project. And I'm more than willing to take those to litigation to make a point when people bid, they better figure it out that.
And this is a good comment because if, in fact, they would have also been contracted with to do the construction engineering, then you'd get into that item. But theirs was now just for the, up to the bidding process. So.
I don't think I would call it like miss engineering either. I would call it mistabulating, right?
Right, yeah.
They didn't quite tabulate all the quantities correctly, which is extremely frustrating on our end. But we've discussed, maybe not something that we're willing to go after them for.
Right, no, and I get that. I know there's a, there's a cost to litigate it also. So, the other question that I have is on the, the extra tile quantity. So, that was again, a mixed, miscalculation, correct?
Miss addition. It was shown in the plans where we wanted it, how we wanted it. When they went to add up the distance of tile, that was not correct.
So, is that also the reason why the, the outlet structure pipe change had to happen too? Was that based on?
That's, that's an unrelated item. This item is actually to set us up to make improvements to our own stormwater system with a project maybe as early as next year pending council approval. Those dry ponds out there stay wet for far too often, far too long. We want to address that. This, this helps us be able to do that.
And the same thing with the additional for the dirt berm work. That was because we're shaping for future use instead of just spending the material. We actually shaped it for a beneficial use later on.
That's correct. That'd be that first item, that common excavation overrun that's essentially helping to create berms.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Correct, yep.
I have a question, something you said, Glenn. You said after you saw these calculations, our own engineering department recalculated it all. Which brings me to the question of the, why are we using an outside engineering firm if you guys have to go back and recalculate these?
They, they still drafted the plans and they still put it all together. And they still spent a lot of money, time and effort in giving us generally what we want. There was just some mistakes in tabulation. We do.
And the question, you know, with those mistakes, who knows if I'd have voted for this if I don't know it's a cost another $80,000. Easily say, well, just it costs that much more. It's not fair because that doesn't give us the total cost as a council. This is a mistake that the engineer made and they need to be held accountable somehow. I mean, welcome to the real world. Just to say we'll pay the bill is not acceptable.
One, one of the things I'd like to respond is, it's still within the allocated cost by the state for the project. The, the bids that we got in were exceedingly good bids based upon the original estimates. So, these costs are to be included in the reimbursement. The, the city for these costs will not have any out of pocket. Okay, so that, that's important to note. No, not that it shouldn't cost.
It's still taxpayer coming from somebody and it was a miscalculation by an engineer. And they're not being held accountable. It's like, we got that statement of.
Well, we've certainly had conversations with them.
But conversations don't affect them financially. So, it's, oh, well, we made a mistake.
But they would have gotten paid more if, in fact, their, their, the actual bid amounts would have been higher.
Any other questions for Glenn or Jason?
Glenn, I, I just think we have to hold them accountable. I mean, we all make mistakes, but we still have to hold them accountable. Look at your paragraph in the bottom. You said you have a lot of following items yet to be addressed. Those could come in higher than what we, but is that still going to remain the limit? Is still, are we still going to be underneath the grant with all those other items?
Yes. We will make sure that the additional items that the Merit Center needs are, fall below that. And that those items are approved for construction.
Even with the $72,000 error?
Yes. That's correct.
I think I should kind of clarify something too. You know, we have $3.1 million of state funding on this project. We're using a portion of those dollars to reimburse ourselves for engineering services provided by our department. I don't, I don't know that we're going to actually expend quite as much as we projected to expend of our own time in dollars. So, that also adds some flexibility within the grant. If we charge to the project actual expenses, it might come in a little lower than what we were anticipating, giving us a wider contingency range.
And I go back to, this is where the public comes up saying, we got a grant for 3.1 million, so we have to spend 3.1 million. And that's the perception out in the public. And that's part of the whole perception, the issue at City Hall is we went for 8 million and that's why we brought down to 6.5. We have to spend it and I don't like that reality. And I think I agree with you, Russ. We should hold the engineers accountable on this and maybe negotiate with them on this whole thing. You guys made a mistake.
I respect that concern, but I would add that we're, we're not trying to invent ways to spend money out there. I assure the council of that.
Well, I never said you were, but that is perception.
Everything that we're spending money on are items that the Merit Center Board or staff in consultation with their board have identified as necessities for their program.
Thank you, Jason. This was an action item, correct?
You know, I think it, I think it might actually be an action item that you authorize us to continue with the project and authorize us to go over the contingency limit as set forth by you guys to finish the project the way that we think it should be done.
I think, I think you're correct. I believe that's true. And I would make that motion.
Craig, is there a second to that motion?
All seconded.
Seconded by John. No discussion, we'll move to a vote.
I think I'll have to ask the council for what our alternative action will be going forward on this project.
Let me ask this question. Can we, why can't we go back to the firm and ask for a reduction? Because they did screw up. I mean, why don't we just go back?
I think, I think Glenn and I would agree that we can do that. If, if that's the desire of the council, we can do that. We're just saying they're not going to willingly do it. They're not going to agree to pay us. It will end up in litigation and, and that's, we don't know that we feel comfortable in where that shakes out. We'd have to consult with our attorney.
And as a council member, my opinion is I think we should do that. That's my point is, I think we need to go back to the engineering firms if you made a mistake. I think it's due diligence to our citizens as a marshal to do that.
We'll put together a letter to be reviewed by the attorney before we send it out and request for a reduction in their payment or actually a payment to us. We can do that.
Well, there's 5% withheld, right, from the architectural fees as well?
Well, they might be complete with their work. See, we took over the project for the construction phase. So, we'll go back and see what their payment already has been. Because they, they provided.
They're, they're done essentially. They were, they were in design phase.
We'll, we'll go back and, and check on that.
So, we say that not passing this, are we putting the construction in jeopardy?
I think that we'll need some sort of.
No, this is okay. You know, this is okay up to this point because we're still within our contingency amount. We just brought this forward to make sure that, you know, that we may be going outside of that contingency amount with change orders.
And I, I concur with Glenn there, but I would just maybe add a statement that maybe an alternative motion from what I'm hearing could be something to the effect of authorizing us to continue to execute the contract and go over the, the change order policy amount if that happens, while also directing us to start taking actions towards grave.
I think that's a well-stated suggestion.
Just one comment. I mean, this is, I assume is a reputable engineering firm.
Yes.
And they're concerned about their reputation.
Yes.
And I don't think they necessarily want people out there knowing that they made a mistake and it, and it's a costly mistake. And you would think that they'd want people to know that if we make a mistake, we'll be held accountable for it and we'll pay for our mistake. And first of all, I don't think they want the mistake out there that people know about it. And they certainly wouldn't want to be in litigation and other communities find out that they make mistakes. And the way you recover your money is you have to go take them to a, to court in a lawsuit to recover your money. And so, I think it, and you're not going to get it unless you ask for it. And so, I think that the prudent thing is to go ask for some money, at least a portion of it, and try and work it out with them. And like I said, they should be concerned about their reputation. If I were them, I would, I would want to settle it with as little publicity as possible. I would, I would want to work with the other parties and make sure, sure that we're satisfied because it's, they certainly won't want other communities finding out that they're not a good firm to work with.
John?
I'd be willing to make a motion that if I can get Jason to kind of restate what he had. I think basically it's to proceed with the, or authorization of exceeding the contingency value, but also to take some action towards the engineering firm that made the mistake. Is that inaccurate?
The execution of the current contract for completion of the construction.
Right.
Is there a second to John's motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Craig. Discussion?
The only problem I have with that motion is we're authorized to go over the contingency amount, which I'm not in favor of. I mean, it's, I think we need, I don't know if that's such as a stock construction, but I think we need to get letters out soon. I'm not, I don't think we should, we have a 5% contingency, which should fit into this if the mistake was not made.
I think I'll just caution the council that if, if we don't go forward, I mean, we'll, we'll take a careful accounting of where we are today and see if we can keep going forward. But we've got paving coming up and you might be taking a risk of not paving a section of the track to stop and make sure we don't spend all the money.
Then the question is, if this came up, Glenn, you said quite a while ago. Why wasn't it addressed quite a while?
I think the accounting of the tile and gravel numbers started to come up in the last, I would say, month or so, where we started to really put it together. And then we kind of had internal meetings and we said, we better, we better put these numbers together and come forward to our council because we're probably brushing up against the deadline or the, the restriction. It's, it's, it's not quite as easy as it sounds to keep track of these costs the way these things happen, especially with the way it did on this project because you have just quantity overruns within items, line items. So, when our staff go ahead and process changes, we'll start to see them. But it's not like we, we have quite as easy of a time tracking exactly where we are with change orders plus quantity overruns. Maybe there's some underruns. It's a little bit of art less science. But here we are today seeing that we're coming up to the.
And I think if this was perhaps a July, I'd be more inclined to delay things. But we're looking at end of season and additional costs if we don't complete things. So, I'm, that's my concern is we want to get this project finished and not end up with a quarter mile of unpaid track if we mess up everything.
And I'll remind the council as well that we are operating with no city general fund tax dollars. This is all state grant for this specific project and this specific purpose. We're definitely not going to go over that number.
It behooves us to, you know, honor that, be frugal with those dollars, even our state dollars as well as if they were, were ours in the city. But I think we can take that into account as far as, you know, trying to take some action against the engineering firm.
Other discussion on the motion?
I guess the next question I'd have is if you wrote a letter, how soon would your response be?
I think it'll be fairly, I'm sure they're going to have to discuss with their attorney. I would say two to three weeks.
I just don't like being backed to the corner. Right now, we're getting back to the corner.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, everybody understands the motion on the table. I'll bring us to a vote on the motion. Close the voting. And that motion does pass. Thank you, Jason. This time I'll call for a five-minute recess.
Jason item?
One more.
It will reconvene the meeting. We are on agenda number 25. This is the cooperation agreement between the United States of America and Corps of Engineers and the City of Marshall for the rehabilitation of the federal flood control work. Jason?
So as you guys know, as the council knows, excuse me, we've been working with the Corps of Engineers to put together a project to make repairs to our levee system in a few choice locations where we've had some, some slope failure. At the August 13th meeting, council authorized the city to enter into, to operate under an existing 1996 agreement with the Corps, but to spend up to $190,000 to make some betterments at these levee locations where we have slope failure. So the Corps would go in under their project, make improvements to put it back to the condition that it was in prior. The city would spend the money to armor and make betterments there so we don't have slope failure again. At the time, the Corps of Engineers thought we could continue to operate under the 1996 agreement. They've since changed their mind on that once their legal team got through it, and they've provided us a draft copy of a new project cooperation agreement. So that is a draft copy. We have yet to receive the final copy. I was told we'd get it today by the meeting. We did not. Our attorney's been reviewing the document and may have some comments, and I would entertain any questions. I think what we would ask is that, you know, if the council's willing to enter into this and agree to it, that we would, the motion would maybe be contingent upon the final document coming in and our attorney agreeing to it and no substantial changes.
Okay. But as far as staff recommendation, you're recommending approval pending review?
Staff is recommending approval.
Okay. Dennis?
Yes, and the only question basically is the costs. You approved up to $190,000. The draft document talks in terms of about $148,000 would be the city's costs. An email from Friday said that might be in $154,000 range, but this, those figures are still less than what the initial anticipated costs were.
Questions? Now, is there a motion to approve this agreement?
I'll move.
Motion by Craig. Second by Jim. Discussion?
Now, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And a motion passes. Thank you, Jason. We'll move then to the next agenda item, which is the, consider the request to, for the City of Marshall to join and sign the purchase of agreement regarding the acquisition of the Helena property on West Highway 19. Sharon?
I believe this would be a city attorney request item.
HRA has agreed to enter into a purchase agreement to acquire that property. The seller, Helena, has requested that the City of Marshall also consent, that the City of Marshall would not proceed with any action requiring Helena to repair or to tear down the damaged building on the property.
So this property, you know, for the public should know that the acquisition of this property is because it is in the Federal Aviation Administration, your right to control area, so needs to be out of that protected area and would be utilizing the substantial portion of this purchase cost using FAA dollars that are designed for...
Correct. FAA and Min dot Aeronautics grant funds.
Okay. Questions for Dennis? Now, is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second, motion by Craig. Second by John. Discussion?
I conveyed my concerns before. We're purchasing property used by a chemical business, and I think 31% of the property is in a restricted plane zone, which really restricts the market for that property because, am I right in assuming that since it's in a restricted plane zone, it restricts what you can build on that property?
Yes.
Right? And I, I do think we're in a buyer's market. I don't think there's other buyers lining up to buy that property. And I'm concerned that the city, I would like to purchase a property, but I'd like to buy it at the right price, and I think we're overpaying for the property. According to the agreement, we have to pay for 20% of the environmental cleanup of the property, and the estimates are that's $50,000 to $60,000, but it could be more than that. The purchase price is $350,000, and then there was an estimate of $100,000 to tear down the building that we don't want. So if you take the $350,000 and the $50,000 cleanup costs and $100,000 in the building removal, that's $500,000. And according to the county records, the assessed value of that property is $415,000. So again, I, I'm in favor of buying the property, but I feel like we should have negotiated a lower price for that property.
Other discussion on the motion? Now, we'll move to a vote on that motion. Close the voting. And that motion does pass. Move then to the next agenda item, which is agenda item number 27. This is the North Star brand research and strategy presentation. I'll first introduce Lauren Dykes. You mentioned a visitor's bureau director, who will then turn it over to the North Star presentation.
Leading Council Mayor, thanks for having us. I'm here with Ed Barlow. He is the Director of Strategic Planning for North Star. North Star is the company we have selected for our branding project, and he's here tonight because we have wrapped up our research portion of the project. So he's here to go over those results and talk a little bit about next steps and how we're going to move forward with this project.
Thank you and welcome, Ed.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Great to be back here in Marshall. I'm going to be sure I can nail this. There we go. Super.
All right. Well, we are glad to be back here in Marshall and sharing this information with you after several months of, of research. And so we will, we will get started. We have a lot to cover, but I know we want to move quickly. So North Star, we work all across the country with communities like yours. We only work with communities. And we say that your brand is about what people say about you when you're not around. And so branding is what you do about that. And so why is that important? Why does that matter? Every person, every place, every product has a reputation. People make decisions on it every day. So this is about attracting interest and investment in Marshall. So we go through this research process to understand what people know. So our process looks a little like this, kind of like an hourglass. So we have spent several months on behalf of Marshall, learning as much as we can from within and getting a bit of an outside perspective. But what we're after is a strategic DNA statement, a strategic positioning statement. It's not creative language. That's where we are today. So I'll be sharing that with you after we go through the research. The balance of the project is creativity and action, so some foundational creative tools can be a result of this, and then how to bring that strategy to life. So what I'll share with you today is research and strategy, nothing creative. When we get to this strategic positioning statement, it's a long statement, it's not creative language, it would never fit underneath a logo. So just managing your expectations today. You may agree with what you see on the screen, you may not. It is the research that was, was gathered, and as we get to that strategic positioning statement or the DNA statement for Marshall, it may not be a revelation. It may confirm some things you thought, it may articulate it in a slightly different way. So we'll jump into, to the research gathered, and so full complement, quantitative, qualitative, internal within Marshall, also getting some outside perspective. So one thing I want to start with is what we call the brand barometer. You may be familiar with a net promoter score. We ask a very simple question, and we did this as part of a community-wide survey, and you had a great response rate here in Marshall. You had 715 respondents to that survey. That's an online survey, but also it was available in print for those that prefer to answer it that way. So we ask a simple question. On a scale of one to 10, how likely are you to recommend living, visiting, and conducting business in Marshall to a friend or colleague? And so you may be familiar with a net promoter score. We look at folks that would score a nine or, or rate a nine or a 10. They're enthusiastic promoters, they're talking positively about the place and are excited about that and sharing it with everybody. Passives rated a seven or eight, probably on the fence, probably satisfied, but not very vocal about it. And then increasing detractors from six to one. And so we also measure a national average. I'll get to that in just a minute and how we compare here in Marshall to that. The brand advocacy score, we don't count those passive, so we take the percentage of promoters and minus the detractors. But just showing, for example, the living question, so you can see that we had just over 10% rated a 10, and then higher than that for nine, but you can see the breakdown there. We get to the brand advocacy score for each of these questions, and so Marshall is in blue, national average is in red. We update that a couple times a year. So we've got some work to do here, so we don't have as many ambassadors and advocates in Marshall as we would like. We would like to be in positive territory across the board and, and beating that national average. But what this does is give you a good benchmark to measure your success. So as you start to implement a brand, the brand here in Marshall, you can, in a year or so after implementation, if you have a citizen satisfaction survey, you can add this question. We'll share the national average at the time with you, and you can measure the advocacy for Marshall. So we're going to start with some additional internal perspectives. I'm, for the sake of time, I'm condensing a lot of information into these slides here. So I've organized the content in this way. We have the left column, our site visit, we were here earlier in the summer for a week. We had focus groups, one-on-one interviews, we did man on the street or undercover interviews. We toured many places throughout the community. The middle column is a qualitative survey, early in the process, to different stakeholders in the community and the business community, all open-ended questions. And then on the right, we're going to column residents, because that's the majority of, of the respondents, but anybody who lives and or works in Marshall was welcome to take this online survey. So again, a great response rate of 715. So we do this so we can compare responses to similar questions. And so we ask folks in lots of different ways, how do you describe Marshall? What's the best descriptor for Marshall? And this is in order of frequency, so you may see a descriptor that's not on there that you expected. It may have been mentioned, but just not with the frequency. And so you can see some similarity across, across these columns. The most mentioned ones, again, at the top, you have clean and safe, sense of community, Schwanz, family friendly, and so great parks, a regional hub. So some similarities and some good descriptions here. Now, the resident survey, because it's quantitative, I can show it to you in graph form, and so I apologize for the, the lack of contrast on my numbers. I may have to lean, but 39% at the top saying the, the descriptor is boring or bland or nothing to do, followed by rural farming and agriculture, then clean and well-maintained. So having a negative response at the top is not surprising, given those brand barometer scores. Staying with our residents in the right column, we had a couple of open-ended questions. We asked them what distinguishes Marshall from other communities in the region. It's a smaller city, a strategic location in the region, there's not much of a visitor draw, it's very clean. And other than home, friends, and family, what makes you most proud? Our institutions here, the university, small-town feel, that cleanliness and collaboration as a growing community. Now, as we get to that strategic positioning statement, it's not a laundry list of all the great things, all the assets and advantages, but many were uncovered through our conversations and the surveys conducted here in, in Marshall. And so you can see the university, I've, if I have, and this goes for any slide, if I have an asterisk next to anything, that means a, a majority of folks choosing that response. But parks, athletic facilities, recreation, great schools, sports, major employers, Camden State Park, Schwanz, healthcare, some, some great assets for, for Marshall. And again, graph form, that top number is 45%, and then 40% for quality of life with the university at the top. Our middle column, wanted to call this out to you, excuse me. Do you consider Marshall to be business-friendly? So these are those open-ended questions, but we did ask this question, we can show in graph form on our stakeholder survey. So you've got more than a third saying yes, not quite a third saying no, and then another third saying they don't know with some excerpts for why they are, we are business-friendly or not. Now, we're not going to build a brand around anything negative, but we can't do it in a vacuum. And so we do gather information on concerns or priorities that, that folks have in, in Marshall. And so you can see in these respondent groups, our residents, a majority talking about the, the empty mall property and the lack of entertainment and not being business-friendly. Business attraction or growth, lack of recreation or conflicting ideas, South Dakota being more tech-friendly for, for business or individuals, recruiting or retaining young professionals, some concerns that folks have. Now, this is what we think outsiders say. So not what outs, how outsiders would describe us, but what we think they will say. And so you can see in that frequency, they associate us with Schwanz or where is it? The residents, their top descriptor was boring and bland, that's what they expect outsiders to say. Small town, nice and clean, far away, conservative, agriculture, some other descriptors. And our residents, you see that at the top, 47% for boring, and the university at 42. We ask questions, what do you have to leave town for? What do you wish was here? What is missing in, in Marshall? And so our residents pointing to better or more retail in those, in those survey responses. Reasons to visit, recreation, entertainment, a lake, attracting youth, a downtown core, arts and culture, or the support for it, a community center, a new hotel or a hotel, millennials and young families. In conversations through the research, we ask about opportunities, and this is from these conversations, opportunities identified. Downtown development or economic development in general, being business-friendly, diversity, improving retail, having a vision for economic development growth, activities, amenities, and opportunities for young families, more events, indoor activities, range of housing options. We did ask a couple of open-ended questions of our resident survey from the right column. The most positive and the most negative impression on visitors and newcomers. So the positive impression, it's clean, it's well-maintained, the great parks and schools that we've heard about, the university, sports facilities, small-town feel, slower, easy, comfortable pace. Our negatives, lack of larger retail, the mall, things to, a lack of things to do, the cost of living, vocal minority, some different negative impressions. And so from our residents, another open-ended, what surprises people about Marshall? The lack of things that there are to do, that it is, has employment opportunities, there and others mentioning available activities, ways to get involved, the events, it's larger than they expected, and the... It's larger than they expected and the housing is more expensive. And then from our center column, our 112 stakeholders, asking them what Marshall adds, education and jobs, and a great gathering spot. We ask folks, what is most important to the identity of the place or without blank? Marshall isn't Marshall. And so you see some frequency in these responses, slightly different order, but the university, Schwanz, major employers, the sense of community, job center, regional hub, parks, sports, some great things. And just looking at our right column, so 69% saying the university and just over half mentioning Schwanz, and they could choose three answers. So taking a little bit of a look from the outside, we did some qualitative conversations with folks in economic development in surrounding areas, some peer cities, different leaders in those communities, and talked to some state and regional tourism folks. So I'll apologize in advance that I'll break every presentation rule here with too much on a slide, but we'll work left to right, so in the interest of time. Again, these are external conversations. So every conversation mentioning the university, pointing us to Schwanz and agriculture and great schools being part of your reputation. They're also mentioning the retail and the sports, the small-town feel. They identify or witness or hear about a good collaboration between public and private sector. It's a well-managed community. And they also pointing to parks and trails and being a regional hub. The majority of folks in these conversations telling us that as far as challenges, that nothing stands out. There's not an awareness for Marshall. It's not as known as it should be. The location is somewhat isolated. And they point to part of Schwanz's operation in the recent years relocating toward the cities. Diversity inclusion, being a regional center is certainly an asset, but sometimes it can make a community nonspecific. Losing retail to Sioux Falls coming up and just unsure of what the business reputation is. So things that they see missing, and so you're addressing that with a project like this, a strong image, addressing the lack of reputation or awareness, reasons to visits topping that list. Opportunities, the university in general, but also seen as a great asset, as a talent pool, the sports activities that you can participate in or spectate, and then innovative companies being part of that reputation, strong economic development. So we are at the neck of the hourglass. I think I'm still on time. And so after all these months of research, we want to get to that strategic DNA statement. So this is an ad guy from, a quote from several years ago, but just keep this in mind. The essence of strategy is sacrifice. You don't want to be all things to all people. You'll end up not being much to anyone. And so as we've seen, there are great things about this community that make it distinct and compelling and attractive. And so the role here of the brand is going to be telling your most compelling story, your competitive, competitive story. And that strategy that I'm about to share with you will help us determine what the story should be about. That's going to be broad enough to include all the different interests here in Marshall, but specific enough to be compelling. So I've got a couple of quotes in these slides that I'll share, but a big concern coming through this research, as no surprise as we went through it, is we are not distinct, or at least we don't have that reputation. And so it's this sort of idea that gives us those brand barometer scores that are not really where we want them to be. And so some concerns that were pointed out, as you saw through the research, some external voices telling us that it's isolated or referred to as in the middle of nowhere. It's just, has got a lot of small-town charm, but can be perceived as unwelcoming or hard to break in. Some headlines for not being, or reputation for not being business-friendly, with a lot of the reputation tied to Schwanz, and that's a great asset, but needing to have a reputation of being more than just that. Concern about folks leaving town and not having much to do here on the weekend, and you saw the points about diversity, inclusion. But lots of great things. The small-town charm, celebrated, the generous spirit here. It is a job center for so many with such diversification in the economy. Lots of entrepreneurial ideas, not just attached to the university, but to the business community. Strong roots in agriculture, but not, that is not the only part of the economy. And you saw the points about strong family focus here and the value of sports. What makes us distinct is we start to narrow in on that statement. The university, not just bringing that educational opportunity, but arts and culture and diversity. Your homegrown brands from right here with far-reaching across the nation and even the globe. And the space that you have, even though some may have spoken negatively about isolation, there is great value in the open prairie here. And the quality of life, just through all of our conversations, receiving high marks. So just a few quotes from the research. If you want to raise a family, you're going to choose Marshall, praising the sports. They need to create employees, not jobs. The university can say they're creating their own workforce. Our global reach surprises most. Fewer aware of it. We heard lots of quotes about economic development, always getting on the short list, always doing something big, and praise for the university. So now at the neck of the hourglass, I have a structure to this. You're going to see that it does not fit underneath the logo, so I'm always careful to say this is not creative language. It's the foundation on which those concepts are developed and those decisions are made. So we have a target audience to whom Marshall has the most appeal. So this is not the only people you'll communicate with, but it's the people that will have the most appeal. You will have the most appeal to. And then a frame of reference is usually a geographic identifier, the point of difference, what makes you distinct and ownable, or what is distinct and ownable for Marshall, and why that matters to those to whom you're most appealing. And so we will jump into this. You'll see that it does not fit underneath the logo. So for those who value seeing their horizon and helping shape it, Marshall, home to Southwest Minnesota State University and homegrown global brands, is the community that cultivates the best in us with an energy and optimism that make a difference for your family. So we'll break that down a little bit. So our target audience, for those who value seeing their horizon and helping shape it, Marshall certainly does appeal to those who want some more space and don't want to be on top of folks in an urban setting or have the suburban sameness, even outside those urban areas. They want to have the freedom to raise their family as they choose or have the outdoor opportunities. Folks want a safe community. One of the quotes from the research was that our kids, they can ride their bikes here. Where can you do that these days? And so that is certainly a great asset. And so strong agrarian tradition here of neighborly support coming through our conversations and through this, a nice distinction for Marshall. It's a close-knit and it's a tenacious community, always striving for improvement, always working toward new ways of doing things. And so while some said that winter was a challenge, lots of tenacity here in the community, whether with our neighbors or our business community. So just geographic identifier, certainly as you saw through the research, a key asset and advantage in many ways is the university, but also having these great brands that can carry forward a reputation for the place beyond the southwest part of the state. A research quote there that I'm mentioning here said, "We are certainly proof that global headquarters can thrive in rural America." So that stood out to me. So is the point of difference, the community that cultivates the best in us. So cultivate certainly gets to that agricultural heritage and the strength that you have in that even today. But the university is cultivating talent and ideas and arts and culture. Yields is not just about crops. It's about people and places and the best outcomes for them. And so Marshall has a lot of impact, not just here in the southwest, but as the businesses and the connections to the university and folks here reach out and do great things that impact folks across the globe. And I went backwards. And there we go. And the benefit, great place to raise a family, lots of folks making decisions based on that, having the freedom to do that in such a safe and clean place. Optimism, very important here. There are no greater optimists than folks in agriculture, but that's evident in entrepreneurs here as well and our young folks. And there's, despite our brand barometer score, there's an energy here. We met lots of folks during our site visit and the conversations that we've had since. So a strong position to operate from, so we're excited about how this can be treated creatively. So that's the, we are at the neck of the hourglass, and so we would then move into the creative part of the process with this as the foundation. So I'm happy to answer any questions back through the research or any questions about this statement or what's next.
Thank you. Very thorough. Open up for questions. Lauren, then, do you want to describe the next steps, or is that you at?
Yeah. So what we will do, we would start the creative process. This is our foundation. And so you've got a great team here, working on behalf of this project that had done great throughout the project. We will continue working with them in evaluating creative concepts, both language and visual elements, and then demonstrate ways to bring this strategy to life visually. And so we would start that process. It takes, it's hard to predict the exact end to a creative process because there's back and forth. It's a collaboration between our creative team and your branding team here, but typically is about a three-month sort of process. So that's the timeframe that we're looking at.
And we have created a subcommittee within our branding committee for this marketing process. So it's myself, Glenn Vader from Roco, Max Raff, who runs an independent company here in town, Misty Butler from Schwanz, as well as Sharon.
I think the, when I said earlier, very thorough, I think the, you know, the different perspectives, the thoroughness of the broad base of input that was received. And I think the council probably isn't surprised at a very honest look at a lot of information. So I didn't, I don't think there was huge surprises there. I think you were able to capture it and put it into a strategy.
I think as the committee, we talked a lot about, you know, you've all heard the phrase, it takes a village to raise a child. Well, the community in Marshall is kind of already doing that for us, and that's what was pointed out in this research. As a parent, you're looking for the best homes, schools, hospitals, all those things, and our community already provides that. It's a step ahead, and it's really obvious that we are putting our dollars in the right places, and our community really appreciates the steps we're taking and that hopefully our brand can speak to that down the road.
Any other comments? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Move that to Agenda I of number 28. This is the, consider authorizing, authorize the commencing of bid letting for the City Hall renovation/construction project. Sharon?
Mr. Mayor and council members, I did include in the packet a resolution that would essentially authorize the City Perk to post an advertisement for bids for the City Hall project. We are continually working with the architectural firm of Engen and Associates to get final bid documents. We don't have those in hand right now, however. We do have preliminary documents that the building inspection department can, can and has reviewed initially. We've also looked at some preliminary documents in terms of the advertisement for bid and some other, some other related documents that would be needed to put forth a bid. We do have scheduled on October 8th, Engen and Associates would come forward and present a little more background on the project. You know, you do have a rendering here, but they can also explain some of the work that went into the bid documents. One of the reasons we are recommending that a resolution be adopted to commence the bidding process is that we, we're working with Springstead, which is now Baker Tilly, on trying to achieve the financing to be completed in 2019. I know early on, we kind of wanted to meet that target in the interest of interest rates. We're not entirely clear whether that's needed at this point, but it's also not uncommon to authorize the bid letting prior to final bid documents. One of the things that's stated in the, in the resolution is that we would have staff ensure that the documents are complete. This includes our engineering and building inspection staff. We'd also, of course, want to make sure that the legal requirements are met, and we would rely on our city attorney to ensure that those are, those are also a part of it. And then we've had quite a few conversations with the mayor, or at least I have, on the progress of the, of the building project itself. I did put in my update from this past week. Last week, we actually had a concrete floor removal specialist look at, look at City Hall, and that's, that's a really critical part of this project because as we're all aware, the main floor will be dropped to street level so that the entrance to the, the main entrance to the City Hall now will, will not have to have a ramp. It'll be ADA compliant. And one of the things that the architect pointed out, not necessarily in your documents, is that what she's seeing in the construction bidding market is there's a lot of volatility. So there's an estimate that was provided of 6.1 million. It does not include furniture and, I have to dig it out, there's a few other things that weren't included in there. And she did want to kind of caution that there is volatility. She also has stated that she believes that 6.1 is on the upper end. So we're, we're all hoping that that comes true. Hopefully, the timing of the bid letting is also advantageous. We believe, and this is stated in the resolution, that we will have local subcontractors. I don't know if there would be a general contractor local, but we do anticipate some local subcontractors and some local work being done on the project, and we're hoping that that would come to fruition as well. The resolution states that we would be accepting bids until October 31st at 2:00, and then that we would have them under review and bring back the bids for formal acceptance or rejection at the November 12th City Council meeting. So I will pause and ask if there's any questions or if any other staff want to make comments on the, on the specific request to authorize the commencement of the bid authorization for the City Hall project.
Thank you, Sharon. We'll open up for questions.
On the estimates that you, that have been provided us, when you consider the furniture and equipment, I think the estimate comes to 6.36 million. And I think it's indicated that does not include the relocation costs. And conversations with you before, I think are- our relocation costs could be between $100,000 and $200,000 additional. There's also something here about dust collection, an additional $108,000 in the notes. Is that in addition to these amounts too then? Because pretty soon we're getting up to almost a $6.6, $6.7 million. It's on page 298 there.
That particular line item might have been placed in there before we had, before the architectural firm actually received a direction on that. And the direction from staff was that we would not, we would not have a dust collection or makeup air collection system. And this was initially put in at the discussion of maintenance where there is some painting and some minimal dust created by woodworking. And so the direction to staff would be that if we were going to do that, they'd have to do that type of work at another location or possibly even in the alley, obviously not in the way of traffic, but outside the building so that the requirement for dust collection and makeup air would not be, would not be part of the plan. So we don't anticipate that to be the cost.
The, so was it the October 8th meeting that the architects will be here and so is that considered a public hearing type of thing where the public has a right to make comments?
Whatever the council wants.
Right. And technically, if it's a public hearing, they have the right to talk, but if it's not, the council reserves the right not to let them speak. And I just want to make it clear that if we do have that meeting, I think it's important that the public have a right to speak and voice their concerns. Just a few comments here. There is something called a reverse referenda where if a petition is circulated and it gets enough signatures, then the issue of, the matter of issuing the bonds would have to go to a public vote. And it's my understanding that there was a petition out there. It had 145 signatures. Evidently, it wasn't the required number of signatures. I think it's supposed to be 245.
244.
244. And it was also five days late in turning in the petition. So I guess I'm concerned that maybe there was miscommunication on the part of the people seeking the petition that they didn't realize how many signatures or when it had to be turned in. I don't know for a fact. I'm just wondering about that, but
You made very clear the number and the timing on both of those issues. You made very clear.
Requirement that these signatures needed to be residents of the city.
Right. And I realize the city is under no legal obligation to have that vote. Otherwise, it would have gone to a vote of the public and they would decide whether they feel that the money that's being proposed to be spent on the City Hall project is a good use of taxpayer money or not. What I'd like to see happen is that we have a town hall meeting and we invite the public to comment on the proposed City Hall project. I know the City Council has often said we're in favor of town hall meetings. We want to hear what the public has to say. Well, I've heard from people out in the public and I think they have real concerns about what we're proposing to do and I think they would like the opportunity to come to meet with us and share their thoughts, concerns, and ideas with the City Council before we move further down the road here. Recently, the county commissioners had a vote on a recycling issue. They heard from the community and they decided it would be best to have a public meeting. And I think they're reconsidering their vote and what they're going to do regarding recycling. I would like the City of Marshall to follow the pattern of the county commissioners and do the same thing. I'd like to get some public input before we move further, look at options and decide if this is the best way to spend the public's money. Because we're talking about spending $6 to $7 million and that's a lot of money. Earlier tonight, we talked about the swimming pool and there were various proposals put forward. And so the estimates for the swimming pool are between $8 and $16 million. That's a lot of money too. And so we're talking about spending a lot of money for City Hall and a new swimming pool. And I think before we make those types of decisions, we need broad-based public input. We need to hear from citizens. I know citizens are concerned about the cost of the project and also about parking. There doesn't seem to be adequate parking at our existing location and I don't see that the parking problem is going to be taken care of. I believe that $1 to $3 million can be saved if we look at other options. And not only is that my opinion, but we have a professional contractor in the City of Marshall that has estimated we could save $2 to $3 million. And so if we have the potential for saving $2 to $3 million or $1 to $3 million, I think we should seriously consider it and look at the very option, the various options before we move forward. So again, I, I am very conservative with taxpayer money. I don't want to see us wasting money. And if there's opportunities to save millions of dollars on alternative plans, I think we should further investigate those. I think we could end up with substantial amount of savings and we could end up with a City Hall with better parking. So I propose that we take our time, get public input, and give serious consideration to other options and then make a final decision.
John?
I guess I'd like to maybe address a couple of those items. I, you know, I think an informational meeting would be probably a good idea, but you know, we've had at least two studies on this. Those were open for involvement in people from the community. There were, we had at times people come in that were not part of the committee that came in and gave either a presentation or a series of questions or whatever. So we did have some of that time for, you know, people to come in and, and offer their suggestions, opinions. We also, I think we need to remind ourselves and the public that we did not just strictly look at one option. We did, we did do this study on the current hall, but we looked at, at the time, buildings that were available for sale. Would they be acceptable to use? Would they be remodelable into the condition that we need? And back in May of 2018, we had our architect do a presentation where that information was brought forward of the buildings that, that were at the time for sale. And in addition, they did, they looked at buildings that were not for sale at the time, potentially could be put up for sale. And in looking at those, you know, I've got the report here, the dollar amounts were not that much of a savings, if any savings at all. In one case, it's slightly more to use an existing building. Another one, it was within about $400,000, $350,000 difference at the time. You've got to keep in mind that the buildings that were out there were designed for other uses. And when it came to a City Hall and we looked at the needs for security, looked at the needs for the public access, whether we, you know, in this case, we come in at a ground floor for ADA compliance, whether we need a, an elevator sufficient size, all those were incorporated by the architect in looking at those. In addition, we've looked at other options that really didn't make it into this thing. We've talked, I've had conversations with people that would be interested in doing a building and leasing it back to us. Yet, that doesn't quite work out in a public setting because the analysis of that has to be opened up for open bids and looking at. So there's a lot of a concern that yes, a company can do a lot of work in the area and then turn around and lose everything because everything has to be opened up and go for an open bid. So the interest in doing that and with building a building and leasing it back really didn't come out. You know, we went through a lot of discussion on this and we really did look at many options and looked at different ways of doing this. It comes down, we need to redo our City Hall. We need a City Hall. There isn't any way around that. We need to have a building. And you know, I think we can get a lot of information out there that people probably don't know that we looked at, things that we've considered. You know, all the options are out there. Yes, we can have some people that come in and say, "Well, you know, that's wrong" or "This is right. I don't think, I think that was too high." But one of the analysis is we've had the same company do the analysis of each of the buildings and of the new building or the reconstructed building we're talking at. So if there is maybe more conservative numbers or more, a little higher numbers unexpected, they're using that same on each of the, you know, each of the items that they reviewed, each of the options. So I think we've got a pretty fair evaluation. Are they exact? No. That's why we're going out for bids. But I think we've got a good comparison of what's out there, what's available. Are there things we could have done? Oh yeah, there's some buildings that are not for sale that maybe we could fit into, but they're not for sale. So I think we've done this and we've done this over the last 10 years. So it's, this is not something that's been a secret. This is not something that we've hidden. We've had public meetings. We've had public discussions. We've had public presentations. And I think the public is pretty well aware of the ones that want to be, are pretty well aware of it. Do we have agreement? No, we don't. I mean, you're not going to get 100% agreement through that. Petition request was started. They made, you know, slightly more than 50% of the required signatures so, in, in a little bit longer period of time. They pushed it. Maybe they could have got there in time or whatever, but you know, I think the interest is there to just get this project done. I don't like spending the money on some of these items, but that's, you know, that's what some of the costs are. We're not seeing these things going down. Every time we delay, every time we wait, this project goes up another $100,000, $200,000, $500,000. We're going to, you know, we're pushing this thing out to, or wanting to push this thing out, we'd be costing us more. I think we owe it to the citizens to get this thing done, get it complete, and yes, do it in the most economical process that we have. And I think we're there. I think we have that. We've studied as much as we could and we've looked at as many options as we could. And this right now, I'm saying, is the best option.
Could I just respond to what he said?
Let's let everybody talk. Jim?
I agree with you, John. It is, being on the committee, we looked at this, I think, was it been a year since we've been working on this project, John? Because I know Mr. Sturek was on the committee when we started and we did weigh out the other buildings. I think the other thing we don't look at is if we take a building out of the private sector and use it for City Hall, everybody seems to forget to add in the tax base. We're going to lose doing that. And over a 50-year period, that is substantial. I figured one of the buildings we looked at is the Mercantile. I think the tax base we lose out of that over 20 years was close to $300,000 between the county, the school district, because they all lose, the county, the school district, and the city. And then we have a structure on Main Street that we probably can't sell. If we don't want it, why would somebody else want it? And again, I agree with you, John, because I remember when I first got on the council three years ago, we were talking about City Hall. And we've looked at a lot of different options. I know one option keeps coming up and I keep saying the building's not for sale. You know, maybe the building will come up for sale, but we can't hope a building comes up for sale and then we can fit it into the budget. Now, I do want to correct a few numbers. The only pool number we have is, I believe, 8.3 or 8.4 million. There is no pool number of 16 million out there. The study we've had done was 8.3 million. That's the only study we've done. City Hall, the approval is for 6.5 million, not seven. So I just want to make sure we get the correct numbers out there to the public.
Did we not talk tonight about a 16 million indoor pool? Wasn't that suggested as a possibility?
As an idea.
Right. So there's a possibility, 8 to 16 million. So that was an accurate statement I made.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I'm not disagreeing with the comments that have been made, but I think, I'm not a contractor, but I think we all know that remodeling is always more expensive than building new. Whether you're doing it in your own home or doing it in your business, whatever it could be. I had an opportunity this past weekend to talk to somebody from Wilmer and they're, they are looking at their downtown City Hall as well. They can't make it work, so they're going to move, I think, the mayor said they're going to move outside downtown. You know, they're going to move outside. They have some acreage and they're going to go there. I think the thing that, that really excites me or gives me a little bit of a different outlook or an input is that the presentation that we had on Block 11 tonight, that, that area has not existed for the past 10 years. We have not looked at that area because it was, there was businesses there. Is there a possibility, and I'm just going to say this, is there a possibility that we could incorporate City Hall into Block 11 in the, in the proposal that's made tonight? It's downtown. It's a new building. Parking would be an issue, but there'd still be some parking there, but there could be some parking on North First Street and I believe on Lion Street. I'm not disagreeing that we have to look at it. I think City Administrator Hanson said at one time that the staff preferred the County Fair Building. And again, it would take it off the tax rolls. It'd have a parking lot. There'd be a lot of remodeling costs to do there as well. I don't want to rush into spending $6 million either. I've only been on the council for eight, nine months and I've only been involved in these, the City Hall meetings probably less than, less than a handful. But I think Block 11 to me seems like it could be a potential area that City Hall could be located.
Am I next? Okay. Well, I was just going to respond to some of the things that John had mentioned. First of all, with regard to that petition, according to the person submitting the petition, they gathered enough signatures over two days. It wasn't like they took 30 days to get the signatures. They put out an email and got 30 or 145 signatures or 100, whatever the number is, over a two-day period. And I think they felt that if they'd have gone public with it, they could have got the signatures a lot faster and more signatures. And I think supposedly staff had advised him not to go too public on this matter. So I don't know if that's the case or not.
That was an incorrect statement.
Well, with regard to what John was saying, yeah, this is the comparison that was done. And the contractor I was talking to has seen this comparison. And he's told me, again, these are rough, that's it? Well, sure. But these are rough estimates by the architects. They're not exact amounts. And according to that professional contractor who's seeing these estimates, he thinks they're flawed. It's a flawed study. They're flawed estimates. They're not accurate. And yet, we're basing a multimillion-dollar decision on flawed estimates. And you don't make decisions based on inaccurate data. And what you want to do is get the best information you can. And I'm not saying I know it all, but if I have a professional contractor who has built million-dollar buildings and, and that person's telling me that we could probably save $2 to $3 million, I think we should give it serious consideration.
I guess just a couple of things, address Glenn and then some of the comments that Russ made. You know, we had this done by a professional organization that's in the business doing this. The comments are from a competing organization and so a little bit of grain of salt in that. They may be, they may be high. They may very well be true. But part of what I'm saying is they use the same criteria all the way through. So as a reference point, if they're high on one, they're, they're, you know, potentially high on all of them. If they are, I wouldn't say they're flawed. There's differences. They've looked at it in a different light than what the particular contractor you were talking about said, who is not involved in some of the details of what's needed particularly for a council building and City Hall building and some of the requirements are there. I, you know, going back on what Russ said, I think that would be a great idea to have that involved. But what you've got to keep in mind, and that's where we ran into somebody doing a doing a, building a building and then leasing it to us, which would, I'm assuming, is type of lease, is, I think we've analyzed that back on an earlier request, and some of that would have to be opened up for open bid. And that makes a great difficulty. We can't go into a lease agreement ahead of time on something of that nature, I believe is what the legal advice was, because we did check on that as far as what could be done. There's a lot of details involved in allowing for an open bid process on this, and in doing a development where there is a, you know, where we would be part of the lease involved, does make that a problem, because we've got to give that option to everyone out there.
A building new without the, without the development.
Yeah, I think that...
Yeah, honestly, that's a problem. I mean, good question. We're going to get bids in, and I think we need to take a look at it, is, you know, we've got, you know, we've got a plan for a building, say, okay, if it comes in, and it is greater than, you know, tell the architects, okay, if we, you know, is it cheaper to knock it down and start over again? That's probably a good question, but right now, we don't know what those costs are.
The other, you know, I'm in favor of utilizing our existing footprint, our existing location. I think it's a little bit soft ground when we talk about the other proposals with Block 11, because I, I'm excited about that one, because it brings people and commerce that will just add to our downtown area, so that, this private development that would be adding 56 units of housing and expanding some retail office and then keeping it downtown. I like that. I fully realize there's many, many steps before that actually happens, but at least this preliminary presentation.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you. So, there's 100 ways I'd like to go on this, and in respect everybody here, and the time, I'm not going to pontificate over my frustrations with some of where this has gone. One thing I'll say is, I respect the fact that we have very knowledgeable people weighing in on what our options are and what their beliefs are, and there's, there's value in all of that. When we went back on this discussion, I was wide open to county fair, to the mercantile, to a number of different options. And then I was pretty quickly convinced that when you weigh everything out, properties on, properties off the tax roll, the pressure, we put this in front of a civic group. This has had as, as I, this has had a lot of scrutiny. To say that there's not public involvement is a huge disservice to the people that have spent a lot of time and dedication weighing in on this private and public. We have, whatever profession we seek out, in a previous discussion we had regarding one of the properties in question, as maybe an option for city hall was up for private development, and there were two legal opinions on that. One was in favor of developing it, and the other one wasn't. So we got to cherry pick which one fit our needs. And now all of a sudden, that property is great for city hall. You know, it's just amazing to me that, how the, how the tables turn, and I'm really frustrated with it. I mean, we could sit here forever and wait for the perfect plan to land in our lap, and I think we'd all be gone. So it's time for us to make a decision. We've gone, we've, we've done this process to ad nauseam. I think we've got a solid plan. Is it, is it my first pick? Would it be the first thing that I would have set out of the blocks? No. But I think with all things weighed, I think we're on the path where we need to be. And if we don't start moving forward, we don't know anything. I mean, we, you have to take one step to know where the next step is. We're not going to play a 30-foot leap on this thing to jump over the process, and, I mean, we need to move forward. I think we've done more than due diligence on this. I understand there's opposing opinions, and I respect that, but it is time to move on. It is time to move on. And I'm just going to stop there, because I could literally go on for an hour, and I'm not going to.
With that being said, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, I'll second it.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig, to authorize the commencing of the bid letting for the city hall renovation construction. Now, discussion on that.
I just have two quick comments. First of all, I don't think anybody said, no, there was no public involvement. I certainly never said there was no public involvement.
You imply that.
I said I wanted more public involvement here. I wanted to hear from the public regarding this proposed plan. So I, I, that's insulting that you say that I said there was no public involvement, because I didn't say that. Number two, number two, with regard to our next item on the agenda, there's a call for bids for removal of hazardous materials. Is that included in the cost of the new city hall, and do we have a rough estimate of what that amount will be?
It is not.
So it's not included in the, the figures that we have? But it will be a cost of doing the project, so it's an additional cost. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, just a comment on that, okay? As long as we're going to do a little tit for tat here, there's work, if we do nothing else to city hall, we need to do a number of repairs to make that serviceable for the next couple of years, and the removal of those hazardous materials would have to happen anyway.
Which is the next agenda item. So any discussion on the current motion on the table? If not, we will move to a vote on that.
If you wait a second, my computer. It just let it wait. Okay, it's working now. Thank you.
Close the voting. And that motion does pass. We will move then to agenda item number 29, the, which is the authorization for the call for bid for removal of the hazardous material from the municipal building.
Mayor and Council, we did have our Public Works Director develop this proposal, and he'll present the information on this agenda item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And just a clarification, that these bids will come in the same time as the renovation bids, and we would not be awarding it until after that decision is made. So it'll follow the same timeline as the city hall project.
Questions? Now, is there a motion?
Motion to call for the authorization, call for bids.
Motion by John, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. Then a motion passes. Move then to agenda item number 30, consider the resolution adopting the preliminary levy for 2020. Sharon?
In your council packet was a resolution that would approve a preliminary, preliminary levy for 2020, and we've had previous meetings on the 2020 budget that leads to the, to the proposed tax levy. We started out initially in double digits when it came to the levy increase, we were well over 10%. Staff had a lot of discussion about bringing that down, and one of the initial presentations for the levy increase was 5.99%. There was some consideration about getting that amount lower, and one of the things that was handed out tonight was the impact to residential and commercial property tax. And if you remember from last year, we had a higher levy increase, but there was some room in our tax capacity growth to kind of level out the impact to residents and commercial property taxpayers. So those particular two handouts really almost put the impact to our taxpayers at the same amount as last year. When the resolution actually specifies a 3.99% increase, and I always am careful about relying too heavy and just talking up about a percentage increase, because you have to look at the actual dollars that the, that, what that equates to. And I'll just throw this out as a comparison, the county levy, I think, is a little over 2%, but their levy happens to be twice the amount as the city of Marshall, so the, the additional new dollars generated are, are more than what we're looking at, 3.99%. The 3.99% represents new funding dollars for 2020 in the amount of 270,642. This is based off of total expenditures of about 12.8 million and revenue at 12.7. So we are, we are, and again, as in previous budget discussions, we are utilizing some reserve funds, at least that's what we're projecting in terms of budget. There is some, a little bit of concern about being at 3.99%. We may have estimated a little higher on some revenues and maybe a little under expenditures, but again, with any budget, you're putting your best foot forward in determining what those amounts need to be on both revenue and expenses, and the actual dollars is what, what matters, and hopefully, when we get to the end of 2020, that we're fairly close. I'll point out a few more items on, on the preliminary, preliminary levy. It does include an additional $250,000 of, of new levy dollars, and that would go towards a street capital fund. This is part of our debt reduction strategy. We're going to continually build that up, hopefully, in the future, build, use that as a revolving, kind of a revolving fund where we can reduce bonding, that has been a desire of the council, and we're taking some steps to do that. It does include, right now, approximately 250,000 for the city hall bonding that we're projected to use, where the other half of that will eventually come from, at this time, we're, we're, we're looking at using liquor store funds. If for some odd reason the, the bids are not acceptable to the council, the 250,000 could be looked at for the final levy, or it could be maintained for future work on city hall, whether that be maintenance of the current building or for a different or new plan, if that would be, would be the particular case. So again, preliminary levy, this is a not-to-exceed levy, so following tonight's action, you will not be able to go, raise a levy past this point. I will answer any questions you might have about the preliminary levy.
Thank you, Sharon, and let me just also add thank you to the staff that have really put a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of work, as well as the council, in numerous work sessions, you know, bringing us to this point, so thank you. Craig?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Sharon, I appreciate that explanation about the $250,000 that you, you know, put into like a road resurfacing fund. Along those lines, though, if, in case those bids do come in where we reject them, and, you know, obviously, I think that, that option absolutely has to be considered, are we, is it wise for us at this point, just because this is our preliminary levy, should we put that city hall fund in there, understanding that that's it, it's earmarked for that, should we fail those, those bids? And still, because I, I don't want to see us go off track on trying to get off of, of bonding dollars and do more of a pay as we go on the street rehabs. I mean, I think that's still solid, and...
I think, to interrupt, you're talking two different things, right?
Correct. Yep, there's 250,000 for a street capital fund, and then there's 250,000 for...
Okay, so you already have the 250, all right, so that's reflected in the 3.99?
Yes.
Perfect, okay, good, because I, I just wanted to make sure that we put that in there so that we have that backstop if we do have to do the interim work at city hall to fix windows and do a boiler. Thank you.
Other questions? Russ?
Just, just a point, maybe some of you have read or whatever, but I know our staff did a great job in doing this as well as Sharon. The state unions just settled on their wages for the next two years at 2.25 and 2.5% increases, and I know we're at 3 or 3.5, so, just an FYI, you know? It's just a statement, I mean, Craig, maybe you're aware of it, to justify...
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, everybody that I've talked to, you know, is the economy really good? And, you know, we're, as we heard tonight, we're an egg-orientated community, and we rely on our farmer friends tremendously, and, and, you know, I don't expect them to have a real great year out there, so I think, you know, every, and we've done a great job of tightening our belts, I just think we have to be cognizant of that fact, that we have to continue to look at ways to save money all the way through. But, yeah, I, I'm going to compliment the staff and Sharon as well, because they brought it down from 5.99 to 3.99.
Mr. Mayor, just one point of clarification. I appreciate you pointing out the fact that the state settled for, the state employees settled for a very respectable raise. One thing that didn't change significantly with our coverage as a state union, that did change with our city employees, is they bear a significantly greater burden of increase in, in insurance costs that we don't incur at the state. So it's kind of apples and oranges, but I appreciate that, that observation, but the, our city employees do bear a lot more of the changes in insurance than state employees do, because state has the luxury of being self-insured as a, as a full pool.
Any other input?
Well, I, what I want to put is, I do appreciate your hard work, as one who comes saying 5.99 is too high, I know I said that many times, that's too high. I'm pleased that the 3.99 is, I think that is a fair tax, a fair increase on our levy to our taxpayers. And I'll make a motion that we approve it.
I'll second it.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig. Discussion?
I have a, a question for the city administrator. Did you say something like the, the county had a 2%?
I don't remember the exact percentage, it was slightly over 2%. I just glanced at the headline when they do it, I don't pay entirely too much attention to that.
In their preliminary levy?
Yes, preliminary levy.
And, and I think you mentioned that, well, they have more dollars to deal with than we do. Is that what?
Their, their levy is about 14 million.
Right. So that, but at the same time, even though their, the dollars is more, their budget is more than ours, too. I would assume that, I mean, if they're getting that much in...
It's hard to compare, because they get county-stated highway revenue, which pays for 90% of road and bridges, they get about 2/3 of human services funding, it's, it's really hard to compare.
Right. And we don't have their financial statements in front of us, so it's, you really can't compare the two.
Yeah, my only point in bringing that up is that you really need to look at the numbers, don't just look at the percentage increase.
Right.
Yeah.
But it would tell me that the county is doing its best to keep down its levy. I mean, if it's keeping it at 2%, they're, they're trying to do the best they can, especially, I mean, they rely a lot upon farmers and the farm economy and taxes that way, so I commend them for their efforts to keep that down. And I'm certainly appreciative that you've reduced it from 5.99 down to 3.99. Personally, I think it's still too high, but the amount we finally agree on can be less than the 3.99, but it can't be more than that, so.
Other discussion on the motion?
I had a question. Sharon, Sharon, is there still room for movement? Do you feel that there is?
I really don't, unless we get a windfall between now and the end of December, and, and I know that the finance staff, when I come to their office and, and talk about reductions, they're, they're not very happy, and I think they're a little worried, and so, you know, one of the things that we've been really good about, underspending, and so at the end of the year, we put money into the fund balance, I'm not entirely sure, you know, obviously, we've got projected reserve spending, but I'm a little bit more nervous about the 2020 budget, probably more so than 2018 and 2019. I think we're, I think we're where we need to be, and I do not recommend going any lower unless something comes up that we haven't considered, or I don't think, you know, unless there's some additional revenue somewhere.
Well, the other thing to mention is, you know, you base your budget on what your actual expenditures have been for the past year, and we recognize we've had some extraordinary things happen this past year, as well as the year before, in terms of our still-revivable costs, in terms of dealing with multiple flooding events, and dealing with the impacts that that has had on our infrastructure, so I would hope, pray that, you know... So I would hope, pray that, you know, those won't be repeated, but we don't know that. And in fact, it would be probably not to be foolish to say, we're going to have different weather conditions than we've had last year or the year before. Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close of voting. And that motion passes. We'll move then to agenda item number 31. This is setting the Truth in Taxation meeting for payable 2020. Sharon?
Mayor, Council, we do have a short description. This is from the Department of Revenue of when a Truth in Taxation meeting can occur on the, on the 2020 payable levy. And it gives you a timeframe there between November 24th and December 28th. I believe last year, we did choose a date that was possibly not on a city council meeting night. You can have your Truth in Taxation meeting as part of the regular agenda. It does have to occur after 6:00 PM. The other consideration is, we do want to make sure that residents receive their Truth in Taxation notice. And there's a little bit of time in between there before you have the meeting. Our city assessor would say he always kind of relies on the 10-day rule that you would get your notice if there's 10 days, although I don't see that in statute. So a possible or suggested date for the Truth in Taxation public meeting would be during the regular scheduled council meeting on December 10th, sometime after 6:00 PM. And then we would propose that the final adoption of the levy would occur on December 17th. As you know, Christmas Eve falls on the last Tuesday of the month, so I believe that it has been rescheduled to the December 17th. So we're recommending December 10th during the regular council agenda item for the Truth in Taxation public meeting.
I beg that motion. Second. Second by John. Discussion. Move to a vote. Close of voting. Motion passes. Okay, so we'll move then to Commission Board Liaison.
Item 32, yes.
Well, we'll do 32 then. We'll consider the approval of a temporary on sale intoxicating liquor license for Marshall or Chamber of Commerce. Any questions?
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Craig. Discussion. Move to a vote. Close of voting. And the motion does pass. Now we'll move to Commission or Liaison reports. For mine, the Regional Development Commission meeting was originally scheduled for a couple weeks ago in Edgerton, and that was not held because there was flooding in Edgerton that day. And so it was moved to the following week when I had other commitments, so I was not at the Regional Development Commission meeting. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Merit Center meeting was last Thursday. Just a quick update, on July 17th, the Central, Senex Central returned to the Merit Center to conduct their annual safety training for 72 employees. Casey's General Stores held two sessions of new systems training for 150 store employees there on July 30th. Minnesota West conducted EVAC training, motorcycle training, and fire rescue instructor meetings at Merit. Marshall Fire Department conducted smoke rescue training along with ladder basket rescues live story hour on July 30th. The Minnesota Propane Association held two sessions of safety training for 27 participants. Sunshine Rotary Club hosted their meeting at the Merit Center on August 29th, had a presentation and a tour of the Merit. Aver Marshall conducted employee relations and behavior training for their employees, 47 of them, from September 10th through the 13th. National Traffic Incident Management Course was held, and that's for like road rescue, fire, anything for major traffic accidents and rescue and recovery training. That's actually becoming extremely popular. It was hosted by one of our, actually, our local wrecker service pulvers, and they had good attendance, was very well received. 68 responders from both wrecker and fire rescue were there. Ralco's had their national sales meeting, September 24th and 25th. Will be utilizing the entire facility for two days. It'll be 117 attendees from across the United States, and they've already booked their next meeting in April to be here. In the last 60 days for July and August, 52 out of the 60 days were booked with 664 attendees. So it's getting good use, good reviews, and we're starting to have competition for dates. So that's a real good problem to have.
I'll add one, one item we actually used it two weeks ago, approximately two weeks ago for emergency operations team meeting, when we were dealing with flooding around the community and the technology, as well as the ability to, you know, use the projections to locate, you know, problem spots around the community that was, staff was giving attention to that was highly, highly effective. And that was a day when the meeting was fully booked, but they were able to contest our portion, we were using it over one side of the room.
Yeah. It's an awesome facility.
Good. Len?
My commissions have not met.
John?
Mine did meet, but I was not able to attend either the utilities or the EDA meeting.
Russ?
Police Advisory Board has not met. The Library Board has not met since the last meeting, and the CBB meets tomorrow morning.
And Jim?
Mine met last week, but unable to...
We'll then to Commission individual items. Jim, let's start, and you're in.
The only thing I want to start with, and I know using a public knowledge, our EDA director has resigned, which has done a good job for us. We appreciate that. But I think it gives us an opportunity for the city as a council to take a whole look at that organization. I don't have the answer to what with, but to maybe look at it and change it without your strategic planning, to, you know, work at the county, work at the area, and tie that in, because we are, yes, Marshall's a regional center, but what's good for Marshall's good for the county. And as you saw on our report here earlier, Marshall people, they don't, they don't know about Marshall. So I think it's a good opportunity to take a look at that position and address it and come on on the other end, running to keep Marshall growing. I don't have the answer yet, I'll come with it.
I'll, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
I want to address that when it comes to my part.
And that's all I have.
Russ?
Other than the recycling topic, that's been a hot topic for everybody, I did have a lady call me regarding stop signs again at the intersection of C Street and Saratoga. Eventually, she watched a council, prior council meeting, she said, "I see you added stop signs in the industrial park. Why can't we get stop signs on C Street and Saratoga?" I said, "I will bring it up to Mr. Olson at the next council meeting." So with school starting, I, I haven't experienced it myself, but I guess there's traffic jams early in the morning, 3 o'clock in the afternoon on, on that intersection out there, people trying to make a left turn and things. So I'm bringing it up to you again, so.
I could respond to that just a minute. The middle school, or the addition, is addressing all of the routes around, so.
About the only comment I'd have to make is on our presentation on branding before is, one sense, I have to kind of shake my head on the, you know, Marshall's not business-friendly. You know, you look at it, what's our biggest assets? Schwan's started here, Ralco started here, Running started here, ADM is here because Minnesota Corn Process started here, a group out of the area.
Action Track.
Action Track. You got a whole list of things, and I just, I, you know, shake my head. We are a very entrepreneurial, friendly, and successful region, so I think we kind of lose sight of that sometimes.
Craig?
Mr. Mayor, the only thing additionally that I have is, I'm just happy as can be to see that the culvert issues are being rapidly addressed out by the truck wash and the, the...
Pipeline.
Helena and pipeline. So there's a little work left to do. Hopefully, that the county's going to be able to come with some resolution of County Road 7, and then Magellan needs to look at their culvert under their driveway. But the pieces that we as a community, Councilman Lozinski and I, Sharon, the engineering department, were awesomely involved in, I think steady and applied pressure was real helpful, and MinDOT stepped up in a big way here on a quick schedule and made that happen. And I think all the parties involved, I think the property owners, the businessmen out there need to be commended. I know that the truck wash owners were heavily involved. The local representation for Magellan Pipeline, the last event we had with the two big rains was in a direct line call in the field while we're standing there with Corporate in Tulsa, and I think that helped, too. But I'm glad to see that, that there's huge progress being made. The ditch elevations have been improved now. They've, they're out there cleaning again today, and I just think that's a huge positive, and I want to just commend everybody that was involved in that. That was awesome. It's a good outcome.
I have nothing.
I have just a couple of things, you know, to follow up on Jim's comment about the EDA director. The, I think my recommendation would be that we ask our city administrator to come back to the council, because ultimately, it's the council's decision with some options on the best utilization of our EDA levy and the staffing level that she would recommend or would be recommended as options for utilization of that, which may or may not include city employee and/or in addition to that, a collaborative investment with, as we've had in the past. So at the same time, I would think, in order to not lose time, I think it would make sense for our HR department to kind of update a position description with proper job pointing so that we would know what the cost of an employee would be in that position if it was a city employee. So that would be my suggestion.
I would agree with you, Bob. I don't have the, the next one.
See, you're done already, Jim.
But I do agree, that's, that's...
Yeah, and she has given a 30-day notice that was effective beginning last Friday, correct?
Correct.
And to the Chamber of Commerce, because it's a Chamber of Commerce employee. So 30 days will move quickly. So I know Sharon and I had some discussion with Rod Gruhat about what is an interim plan, because you're not going to have, regardless of what the plant, staffing plan would be, you're not going to have a permanent person in place.
Right.
So, so we don't want to avoid, I mean, we heard earlier this evening, a number of things that TARA is involved in, and we really don't want to drop any of those plates. And then earlier, at the end of the HRA meeting, I gave a very brief description of conversations that we had with the President and CEO of Ralco regarding the North Ace Street project, which I think was a, a solution that will allow Ralco to continue to utilize that facility and to grow in that facility. They're currently out, I mean, it's a going concern in that facility, and it also allows us some time to look at some alternative space for the storage of confiscated vehicles, as well as some out-of-season public works equipment. So in fact, it gives up to three years. I think the next step on that, because that contract for D needs to be acted on by really our first meeting in November, the next step would be, you know, Sharon, work with legal counsel to develop a kind of a letter of understanding on the ending of that contract, exiting of the contract for D. And with that, and when John was talking about businesses that are starting and are, have started and are kind of a great asset to the area, Ralco should be included in that, in that listing also. Did you say Ralco?
Did include them, but I did miss out on one, that actually would be US Bancorp. They would not be here had not Schwan started the operation in the first place, so really...
Schwan's global lead.
No, you don't want to give a go on VH, I'd go too long. We're already late.
Okay. And I'll stop, too. We'll move then to staff reports. Sharon?
Just a follow-up to the EDA discussion. And the last two EDA board meetings, there has been some suggestion about, you know, involving the county and having this regional perspective. And, you know, in the last year, we've really focused on the city of Marshall and kind of the direction to the chamber employee. In this case, with TARA, is that, you know, 100% of the time should be the city of Marshall. I think that's important. We're large enough, we have clearly enough work in the economic development field to warrant 100% time. And I did include in your packet some comparisons, but actually, today I received some more information comparing cities. Obviously, we still need to do what's right for Marshall, and it may not line up with other communities, but it provides some insight into what, what other communities have looked at and where they're going. But just a question on this, would you like it as a regular agenda item or a work session? I'll do whatever you wish on that discussion.
By preference. If we could schedule appropriate time with work session.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, so we will work on that as part of staff. And, you know, because I kind of got the EDA board on one side and council on the other, and I'm kind of hearing from both, I, I'll suggest to the EDA board that they can certainly come to that discussion as well. And it may also be an opportunity for us to talk a little bit about roles and responsibilities of the council and the EDA board, who in effect is, there really is essentially a committee of the council, and maybe to kind of have that discussion with them, too, so they kind of know that. Obviously, they have a lot more power in terms of statute than they do some other committees that we have in the city, but nonetheless, they really serve the city council.
Sharon, you may want to also add that while TARA's focus has been 100% the city of Marshall, she has, and you provided authorization for her, by assistance of one of our neighboring communities.
Yes.
They look at the, the employer, the major employer that left, and there's a prospect of going back in, and she's been by them, that community, with special experience.
I think sta, at the staff level, there's always communication with our neighboring communities, and, and we could list other departments and divisions within the city who helped kind of our neighboring, neighboring communities. So I think if we're able to do it, we'll, we'll definitely look at, look at doing that. So that is all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Len?
Nothing further.
Which then leads us to our information items, as well as the listing of upcoming meetings. I would entertain motion.
Let's move.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Russ. Discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. Close of voting, and the motion passes. We're adjourned.